Good evening, everyone here in the room and on Zoom. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Fairfax Town Council for Wednesday, December 6th, 2023 at 6:30 PM in the Fairfax Women's Club and on Zoom. Could we have, I'm going to call this meeting to order, and I guess I'll just ask everyone to rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Here.
Councilmember Hellman.
Here.
Councilmember Blash.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kohler.
Here.
And Mayor Cutrone.
Present.
All present.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the?
So moved.
Hold on, I have, I have a comment. We're missing an agenda item, which is the discussion of future agenda topics. So I just want to make sure we get that on the agenda.
Okay.
So friendly amendment to?
Put that at the end.
And on a recurring basis, please.
Okay. So we'll, we'll add that to the end of the agenda if everybody's okay with that.
And did we want to, I think staff has requesting that we continue item, I don't have my agenda.
Sorry, item four, correct. So for folks interested in item four, which is to accept a report on renter protections, implementation estimates, and to discuss, consider pilot implementation of a rent stabilization program, adopt a resolution, yada, yada. That would be continued. Are we doing that to a date certain or?
To a future agenda item.
Just to a future agenda item. Okay, great. So thank you very much. And thanks for everybody who wrote in on that item.
So in accepting the friendly amendments.
Okay. So with those two friendly amendments, did we have, we had a motion from Kohler. Is there a second?
Well, second.
Okay, motion Kohler, second Blash. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Blash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kohler.
Yes.
And Mayor Cutrone.
Yes.
All eyes, motion passes.
Okay, great. I will read the land acknowledgement. The Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewa people of present day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging. The mayor shall, I'll read the meeting protocol now. The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. The town council will review the agenda at 10:00 PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matters not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. No announcements out of closed session. There's not been a closed session since our last meeting. And with that, we can move on to the regular agenda. And we have, for our first item on the regular agenda, reorganization of the town council, selection of mayor and vice mayor. I'll pass that off to our clerk, Michelle Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor. So each December, the council reorganizes and selects a new mayor for the next 12 months and a new vice mayor for the next 12 months. The council has complete discretion in this. There's no adopted policy, but it's a practice that the vice mayor usually is selected as mayor. And for the vice mayor position, usually the council would select the council member for whom the most time has passed since they were last mayor, or the newest council member who hasn't yet served as vice mayor or mayor, and who has served on the council for at least one year. So as it says in the staff report, and those two last descriptions fit councilmember Ackerman and councilmember Blash. So with that, I'll turn over to you, Mayor, to moderate the discussion.
Excellent. And first, I'll ask any, any questions or clarifications because we need to take public comment on this, right? So we'll take public comment and then we'll have a discussion. Any questions or anything?
From?
Okay. So with that, we'll open public comment on item number one, which is the reorganization of the town council, selection of mayor and vice mayor. So please come up at this time to the podium, and then we'll go to folks on Zoom. And everyone will have two minutes. Thank you.
Sierra Salem. I'd just like to volunteer myself for mayor to help you guys out, as I have in the past. So far, you haven't taken me up on it in previous years. And whoever gets to be mayor, I hope you remember, everybody on this side of the microphone here, and try to be as kind and skillful as you possibly can at navigating all of the Looney Ticks on both sides, because it gets heated. And from this side, it can get to feeling like people are getting cut off. And from that side, I'm sure it can get to feeling like people are just rambling on and on and on. And whoever gets to be mayor, hope you find some kind of balance and got to help your soul. Good luck.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, council. With the next rotation and the rotation thereafter continuing, I hope that the council will always remember that your job is to represent the voice of the majority while protecting the voice of the minority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. There's now, what, three items on the regular agenda? So to say that people have two minutes to comment on this is again a violation of the Brown Act, and again violates the California appellate court ruling of what is reasonable for public comment. So since you all continue to violate your oath of office, this would be a great opportunity for all of you to resign, because I don't understand why we have to be subjected to a bunch of lawbreakers.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. Candace Neil Ricker. I want to say thank you to our mayor and vice mayor for serving this last year. I know it's been a lot going on. And I want to say thank you to you all. I made a call out about 11 months ago about loving to see your faces more in town. And that's something I have been seeing from at least some of you. So I wanted to say thank you to that, and it means a lot to those of us that work in town and live in town, to be able to wave at you on the street or say good afternoon. And good luck and good energy to our upcoming mayor and vice mayor. There's going to be a lot going on this next year. And I wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers on this item?
Hi, Todd Greenberg, downtown Fairfax. I just want to wish Barbara the best of luck getting out of the hole that this council has dug itself into. I hope that your experience and wisdom will allow you to chart a course that takes into account everybody in this town rather than just special interest groups. And I know you're going to need all your skills, so I wish you the best of luck and hope you can do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Yes, Mayor, there are two raised hands on Zoom.
Excellent.
Would you like me to? The first speaker is Philip S. And Philip, you're unmuted now.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Great. I'm going to jump the gun a little bit here and say, welcome, Madam Mayor Kohler. I know you haven't been sworn in yet, but I'm going to welcome you anyway. I did want to say that Ms. Hellman, on a number of recent occasions, has turned to staff during agenda meetings and asked them to make sure that the minutes reflect and capture the ranker present in the chamber. I don't know why she wants this on the record, but I might suggest that any editorializing of the record make note of the disdain emanating from Ms. Hellman and others on the dais toward the citizens in this meeting room. We hear you loud and clear. There's no doubt in anybody's mind about how you feel about the public, public voicing concerns that run contrary to your ideology. Ms. Hellman, and you too, Mr. Cutrone, both called.
So this is about reorganization. If you could, please, please keep your comments to the actual agenda items. I'll give you one more warning if you go off again, but then left to cut you off after that.
I'm sorry. I thought this was open comment period. So I appreciate you bringing me up to speed on this. I will continue this comment at the appropriate time, and I apologize for taking up time on an item that I should not be speaking to right now. So thanks again.
Thank you, Philip. No problem. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Lynette. Lynn, you're unmuted now.
Hi. I would just say that I wouldn't want Blash or Hellman involved, because I think we're, Cutrone, we can't come back. But they have too many special interests, and I don't feel that they support homeowners in this town, or people that have been living in this town for years and years and years that helped develop this town, create this town, support this town, generations. I feel absolutely no support from those people for, towards homeowners. And I just don't think they should even be with town council. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joe McGary. Joe, you're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes. First of all, I want to thank Mayor Cutrone for his service in the last year and, and yeah, for his leadership and some of the really important words that he shared during.
Thank you, Joe, but if you could keep it to just the reorg comments, that'd be great. Thank you.
Sure. All right. Well, I'll welcome Mayor Kohler. And I'd also like to suggest that I'd look forward to hearing from councilmember Blash. I think that she's brought a lot of refreshing ideas and a, and a certain level of diplomacy to the council. And I look forward to her in the vice mayor role. So just wanted to put that plug in for her. Thanks.
Thank you.
I see no more raised hands on Zoom.
All right. Well, we will then close public comment, and we will take it back to the dais for discussion deliberation.
I make a motion.
Yep.
I move to appoint Barbara Kohler to mayor and Lisa Blash to vice mayor.
Should we do those as separate?
Separate?
Yeah. So let's take the Barbara Kohler one first.
Okay.
I'm happy to second that motion. Are there any discussion on that? Any trepidations, Vice Mayor Kohler? Just kidding. Okay, well, we have a motion to second, so we could call the roll on that vote.
Sure. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Blash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kohler.
Oh, yes.
And Mayor Cutrone.
Yes.
All eyes, motion passes. Congratulations.
And I don't have to do the second part, do I? Oh, I do. Dang. All right. Okay. Vice mayor, there was a motion.
Yeah, okay. Unless that motion still stands, I would also like to move to nominate councilmember Blash as vice mayor.
Okay, excellent.
I'll second.
Okay.
Or whatever.
Yeah, sure.
Whichever. You can, you can have the nomination.
Councilmember Blash, all, all good with you?
Sure, let's do it.
Okay, great. Dream team. Okay, we have a motion. I'll take it, motion Ackerman, second Hellman on this one, to appoint councilmember Blash as vice mayor for the next year. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
For the last time. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Blash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Kohler, Mayor-elect Kohler.
Yes.
And Mayor Cutrone.
Yes.
All eyes, motion passes.
Awesome.
And before you get up, we have a couple of things for you. And I just want to announce, we're going to say a couple of things for now leaving Mayor Cutrone, and then we'll take a break for some refreshments.
Is it mayor emeritus? Just kidding.
I like the gender neutral of mayor. Thank you. So I, I'm happy to present this to Mayor Chance Cutrone from 2023 in appreciation of your leadership to the town of Fairfax. And the quote that Michelle Gardner, our clerk, and I chose is, where there is no vision, there is no hope. George Washington Carver.
Thank you so much.
And, oh, wait a minute. Oh, secret stuff in there. Okay. And I have something just from me. It's a couple of things to help you over the next year. Since you won't be sitting next to me, you'll need a bunch of mints and some treats, kind bars. And then, of course.
Ah.
Daily affirmations.
Amazing. I'm good enough, I'm smart enough, and doggone it, people like me. Aw, thank you, Barbara. Thank you all. Appreciate it very much.
And before we do a celebration, if, is it all right if I make a few statements? Or would others like to say thank you to Mayor Cutrone first? Okay, well, I'd just like to say, I want to thank you for your leadership. We don't always agree, but I completely have total respect for you and your work ethic, your volunteerism. And I specifically want to thank you for your leadership on the Fairfax Bullionous Road project. I know that you have spent many hours, convened many meetings, and I've heard from Supervisor Rice how your leadership is really bringing things to a close. And she said to me on a recent hike, where, by the way, she had to help me, is that she said that this is kind of the start of projects together, working together between cities and the county. So I think you've done an amazing job, and I'm sure you're going to continue on with that project. So we all owe you a debt of gratitude for that. I want to thank you for your partnership on the housing element that we're veering towards an end on, on the wall property, towards looking towards some huge open space for our town, and so much more. I've had the pleasure of working with you on some subcommittees. Some have been difficult, such as amending our rent stabilization just cause. But I think you, you worked through all of that with grace and composure. And I know it's been really difficult. It's been a hard year. So thank you so much. I'm sorry, I'm going to cry. Does anybody else want to say a few comments?
I'll, I'll make it brief. I've told Chance how I feel about it many, many times. I think you're an exceptional leader. I love working with you. I love listening to you. I find you to be analytical and mindful, inclusive and compassionate. And I've grown a lot from my exposure to you. And just look forward to working together in the future. So thank you. And thank you for how you handled that meeting where we had the really awful racist remarks. I thought that was incredible composure and how you responded to that was really noteworthy. Thank you.
Anyone else? Bruce?
Yes, thank you. I, I would just second all of those comments and, and really thank you for your dedication, your hard work and your thoughtfulness and your balance. And we're, you've been ambitious this year. The council has been ambitious, and we've, you've, I think, been a fantastic leader for the year. And I look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you.
All right. Well, I'll say a short thing. So yeah, it's my first year, and I thank you for guiding us through what, you know, it was a pretty wild year. And I have really appreciated your leadership on a number of things, particularly as Vice Mayor Kohler said, on roads issues about really forging partnerships outside of Fairfax to address issues that are really important to the citizens of Fairfax. And being able to pull that together has been very impressive to me. I also want to say that I've appreciated your leadership. And I know, you know, council, Vice Mayor Kohler was also part of this on the wall project. I've been very impressed by how you are a environmental leader, both here in Fairfax, but also at a much broader scale. And you bring a lot to bear on those issues that I think are really helpful to our town. And it's been really exciting to see that sort of knowledge be applied to something that, for me, has always been a dream, and that I hope will actually be able to materialize, which is having the wall property be open space. So that's that. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I would thank you all to my colleagues. And honestly, it's, it's a team effort, and that is extended to staff. I think I've been reflecting, it's interesting to be mayor, and it's interesting to now basically not be mayor anymore. But I've been reflecting a lot on the year, because there have been like so many twists and turns in this year for Fairfax, but for Marin and the nation and, and everything. And, you know, at the start of the year, speaking with town manager Abrams and be like, if we can get a really rock star deputy clerk, and if we can fill that planning position, this year is like a win, you know? And it's been so much more than that. There, there have definitely been heavy parts that we've all had to go through together. But like, gosh, like, some of the things that folks mentioned on the dais just now that are, you know, works in progress, and we need to raise more money and get these projects across the finish line. But there are like a ton of really amazing projects that have happened this year in Fairfax. And, you know, yesterday I went to go speak to some grade school students, and you never know, like, what their questions are going to be about, like, what is a mayor like, or things like that. But they ask some of the most phenomenal, poignant questions. And one of them asked me, like, why I, why I would be a mayor of a town. And, you know, after this year, I asked myself that question a lot. And at the same time, my immediate gut response is just because I just like love this place so much, and it's given so much to me. And I, and that was still like my gut response. After all of the different stuff you encounter as a council member, as a mayor, to know that that can still be the gut response is just, we're coming here together to this room to solve problems. It's such a beautiful thing. And the other thing that I have been thinking about all day after speaking with those first graders and second graders and third graders, is one of them asked me if, you know, I'm sad that the year is coming to the end, and I'm no longer going to be a mayor. I told them all about how we cycle through, and it's this really nice thing. And my, my immediate feeling on it is like, it's so amazing to come out the other side of a process like this. And I encourage you all to consider it, too, to consider running for council or to consider the opportunity afforded to be a mayor and to hold this container, small D, democracy, to try to figure this stuff out. But to come out the other side of it and to say it's something that I've done, it was a really cool experience. You know, maybe I'm good at it, maybe I'm not good at it. There are different opinions about that in the community, I'm sure, and on Nextdoor, I'm sure. But one of the amazing things is that I can come out the other side of it, and I'm still Chance, and I'm still just another neighbor in the community, and just another person that lives in Fairfax and loves this place. And yeah, I just am so honored. And so it's such a privilege to be able to do what we are doing here. And I just want to thank my colleagues for giving me the opportunity and the voters for giving me the opportunity to be able to experience the magic of what it is to be a mayor in a, in a small town. So thank you very much.
Okay, so we're going to break for refreshments for a few minutes there in the back of the room. And I want to thank our town manager, Christine Foster, who I believe shopped, as well as Michelle Gardner, for our treats. So please help yourselves. And we'll reconvene in about 10, 15 minutes, 10 minutes, hopefully. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So thank you, everyone. Before we move on to open time for public expression, I want to make a couple of comments. And that is, I have a theme for this year as mayor. And my theme is back to basics. I'd very much like to do things like work on our roads, work on our bridges, a lot of public work, sort of infrastructure work. I think we've got a lot to do. Our budget, which we always pay close attention to, but let's keep our eye on that ball again. So that's what I'd like to focus on for the coming year. And just to make one brief statement, some of you were at our meeting last time and know that we got quite a bit of hate speech and people calling in. And it's an organized group. So I just want to make a quick statement. I want to make the public aware that our ability to silence offensive comments is constrained by the Brown Act and the First Amendment. The Brown Act requires this body to take public comment on agenda items to allow open time and to allow open time for public expression in each meeting. The law permits us to remove, mute a meeting attendee if their speech is disruptive and prevents this body from accomplishing its business in a reasonably efficient manner. And not all, not all items will be, has to be within our jurisdiction, even open time. Fairfax Town Council meetings are a place of business, and the council has work to do. For that reason, these types of public meetings are a limited public forum where can, we can enforce reasonable restrictions on comments. As provided in the Brown Act, comments on non-agendized items must address matters within subject matter jurisdiction of the Fairfax Town Council. And comments on agenda items must relate to the item. Accordingly, if a comment falls outside of these categories, the council is authorized to move on to the next comment. So with that, I want to open us up to open time. And I want to remind folks that we're staying within the two minutes. We're hoping, under the new year, to try to end our meetings earlier. And part of that is staying within two minutes. So with that, first speaker, please.
I get to be your first, Barbara. I'm a conscientious person, and I want to protect you guys from my thoughts. So this.
Could you speak into the mic, please?
I'm a conscientious person. I want to protect you guys from my thoughts. So I'm going to put this on. It's not to protect me from cosmic rays, because I think my thoughts are kind of dangerous. I'm here about all kinds of things. I just want to hold this up. This is part of my float, which I'm going to bring down here again one of these days. And this is kind of the world that we live in. You know, collect the whole set from the Franklin Mint if you want. You know, it might take me a second for me to disorganize my thoughts so I can make some sort of nonsense up here. But, you know, here we are. It's winter time. It's dark. People are depressed. They're cold. What are we doing about that? At least we got our warm houses, at least most of us. We got work to do. It's like. We got work to do. It's like Christmas time, it's dark. We're mostly shooting each other, buying Teslas, electrifying. I don't know. We can't consume our way to a healthy environment. We just can't. So I'm going to suggest that with the whole Christmas thing, that perhaps the biggest and the best gifts that we can give people is not being stressed out and buying a bunch of stuff that nobody needs with money that we don't even have on credit. But maybe just leaving it all on the earth, leaving the environments be and the best gifts that we can give each other besides community and food and loving each other and being with each other. It's kind of rebuilding the environments. And maybe like all this kind of nonsense and stuff has something to do with all the alienation we feel and not taking care of each other and powerlessness. And anyway, I don't know quite what to do about it. It's a messy world. I don't like the way things are going. And it's not up to you. It's up to everybody. And if we don't do it, that's politics, you know? We need to get off our butts, quit consuming the planet to oblivion and actually rebuild nature. And that's
Thank you, Sue. Perfect timing. Next speaker, please.
Lincoln Bell Dominga. So there's a couple of things. First thing is I would like for you to consider holding a special meeting to consider a resolution for ceasefire in Gaza. It's, uh, it seems to me there's better ways to spend our tax dollars than than this. So that would be great. And, um, the other thing is about sound pollution. I I would like you to consider that it's real. It's, uh, it really affects us. It affects our nervous system and our ability to be able to relax. So it's affects our health and it's real. Sound pollution is real. It's not just about having good air to breathe, but the air has been really good lately and it's great. But, um, the sound is also very important. And like all a lot of the new leaf blowers that are the electric, so they're cleaner, but they are really loud and noisy. And that's not something that's not important. It's also very important. So, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Kendra Scott. I think I'm probably familiar to some of you. I live at 10 Spruce Road and I come before you as part of the Spruce Road Coalition. And you can probably imagine why I'm I'm here. You probably guess. So, um, for those of you who don't know, I'm here because of Fairfax Ace Lumber and our problem with them as neighbors and how how are we going to resolve our problems? As you know, we have eventually come to an agreement that that a a fence was going to be built. It has not been built yet. We still have other issues with Fairfax Lumber that violate, you know, ordinances that are are set forth by by the town of Fairfax. I don't think I need to read them out to you. I printed them out, but these are ordinances. And I want to know who's going to enforce these ordinances? Uh, the last time that I brought these to before you, you said there was no one to enforce them. Like you just called the police department. So we need to call the police department in order to have the dust not pollute our lungs and make our cell our families sick. We have to call the police when nothing's being done about a fence being built. I I just want to ask you how we're going to move forward with this. We're still here. We're not going away. You're going to see us here until we get some solution. It's been a year and a half, maybe more than that now, that we've come in front of you again and again without there being any sort of solution for us. Fairfax goes about their business. You enforce your ordinances with with tax taxes with with, excuse me, for licenses for businesses. So, you know, I I ask that you please enforce these ordinances.
Thank you.
They're there.
Thank you.
I don't have to write them down for you. So thank you for your time.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. A little shorter than Kendra. Hi, guys. My name is Suzie Bergen. I live at 30 Spruce Road.
See, could you please speak into the mic? You're a little far away.
Okay, can you hear me better there?
Yeah.
Just to give you a recap on the timeline and our dealings with what Kendra was talking about. This all started in 2001. A group of neighbors on Spruce Road asked for your help. Promises were made in front of the town council back then and nothing happened. Uh, neighbors individually were complaining to Fairfax Lumber over the years, only to get very little help with the remediation of dust and noise. And then finally, last year, we did start to organize again and around the massive loss of trees, which is was our common ground as a as a neighborhood coalition. And now our reality is of major visual blight, no protection from the old trees that we lost and unsightly and toxic dust that we now see and feel more than ever. Our hope was that the subcommittee approved last October would finally be a way to work together and address some of our issues. The subcommittee never panned out, unfortunately. But the tree committee in the spring did give us some relief and forced Fairfax Lumber to redraw their plans and keep as many trees as possible. After that vote, Augie Venezia let us work with his landscape architect, Gary, which was great. Except as what Kendra just said, nothing's happened since then. And in September, the final approval for the fence was given. We haven't gotten a meaningful update since then. And it's been frustrating. So we're just here and hopeful that you and town staff can use your influence to help get the fence built as soon as possible and address the noise and dust issues that persist.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so there will be no clapping or applauding. It makes people who are not getting applauded feel bad. Thank you. Could you please?
Ready?
Kathy?
Hi, Kathy Flores, Fairfax. Good evening. The other day I emailed a cartoon and an article to the town council depicting how Fairfax roads are the worst roads in Marin County. On November 8th, 2016, the majority of Fairfax residents voted to extend Measure C from a half percent to three fourths percent sales tax. This increase was to provide an additional $225,000 a year to be used for programs, improvements or services in Fairfax, such as police, public safety, street and sidewalk maintenance and infrastructure in our town. Chance stated that we hired a public works person and approved 5.8 million to tackle the storm drains and road paving projects. We haven't, why haven't these improvements been going on over the last seven years? Are these funds used and managed in accordance with Measure C terms? Or is money taken from one department such as the police and used for another program that a few in our town council use for their own politics? On another note, starting on October 26, 23 through December 29, 23, the public has the chance to cast their so-called votes on where Marin County is to spend 2.5 million of our tax dollars. This project is actually a polling of opinions rather than an actual vote where you can choose seven out of 24 proposed projects. You don't have to be a registered voter or a legal resident to express your opinion. And anyone over 14 can cast a vote. You just need a cell phone. The website to check this out and to come to your own conclusions is PB, peanut butter, peanut butter. That's why you do peanut butter. PB dot MarinCounty.org. Go online and check it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Frank Hager from the Cascades. Just to let you know, we were just notified by our insurance carrier that they will no longer carry us. They're canceling us. We've been with Kemper for about 30 years and they're canceling us. My broker went to five other insurance companies. None of them are writing in Fairfax. They say Fairfax is the most extreme hazard neighborhood. Excuse me, the Cascades are most extremely hazardous neighborhood for fire, wild and fire in in Marin County, and they refuse to write. So I'm I'm not sure what the town council was doing about about the inability of our residents to get a to get insurance. But you're going to add about, what, 490 to 5 to 598, uh, new units in Fairfax? I don't know how they're going to be built because they won't be able to get insurance. Are you doing anything about about the the ability of your residents to to obtain insurance, either fire insurance or homeowners insurance?
Thank you.
That's it. Okay, just thank you. Thank you.
It's not an interactive session, as you know. Thank you.
You you never answer anyone's question. You know, I don't know who you represent, but you sure don't represent the people of Fairfax. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Let's stop with the clapping, please.
No, it's only okay to clap when it's the council who's receiving it. Can you start me at two minutes again? I would insist on three, as is my legal right, but I won't need it. I'm giving you a cease and desist notification due to your numerous ongoing habitual violations of the Brown Act. Interesting, Barbara, how you quoted the the Brown Act in trying to shut down public comment, even though there's a California appellate court ruling that guarantee that says that three minutes is a reasonable amount of time unless the agenda and or the amount of people who want to speak is incredibly numerous. Yet you say two minutes. That's a violation of my civil rights, everyone's civil rights, and it's a violation of the Brown Act. So, um, as I said, I've repeatedly given you the statutes. You ignore them. I tell you about Ribikoff versus Long Beach, which was the appellate court ruling. You ignore that. So here's your cease and desist notification. You have 30 days. This is going to Bonta as well.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Candace, Fairfax. Now piggyback a little bit on Frank with regarding fires. I'm sure you all know there was another fire in the encampments last week that our firefighters had to respond to. People are cold there and it's understandable why they want to fire. But incredibly dangerous. So next to our 100-year-old plus all wood building. We I would ask all of you to really consider some actions here. I know that they're limited and that how you are limited. But none of this is making sense right now. And those of us that all worry about fires, every time I hear a fire truck, even though we're in past fire season, I react and check. So I just, again, would ask you all to consider that and maybe how we can come to some sort of solutions there. Secondly, regarding the Chamber of Commerce events, it's been really exciting as someone living in town and working in town to see them putting together all these events this month. Um, I would ask that you just remind everyone at the end of the meeting of the dates and times of all of them. It was a little confusion. And also with the Chamber Commerce event tomorrow evening. Would love to see any or all of you there. It'd be really nice to be able to cheers you over the holidays. We got a lot going on this next year. And I know I've been missing for a couple of months with family reasons, but I'm here and I'm back. I welcome any of you to reach out to me. And let's make this a good year for all of us, for Fairfax, for our roads, for our citizens, for our kids. You know, let's let's really push this in the right, in the best way we can for all of us. And I know you guys are pulled in many directions. Please truly focus on your constituents, what they're what you're hearing from them. And, um, I completely agree with you, Barbara. Let's get back to basics. So, thank you very much.
Good evening, council. My name is Todd Greenberg, downtown Fairfax. I want to give a little public service announcement first. Uh, it's been in the town newsletter. Thank you for putting it in. But the Chamber of Commerce is back. And on December 15th, there'll be a winter fest where downtown Bolinas Road will be closed from four to nine. There'll be all kinds of activities. There'll be free gift wrapping, courtesy of Indy Alley. There'll be 20 different photographers at Stephanie Mohan's photo studio. There'll be all kinds of good things. I encourage everybody to come down. Next, um, I'm glad that you have your priorities focused on back to basics. I applaud that. I would clap. But I'm being told that I can't do what council members can do here, which leads me to being disappointed that we're starting off treating people unequally and unfairly in Fairfax. I want you to think about the double standard that has been evidenced here tonight. That being said, at your next retreat, if you do have a theme, which is back to basics, I would encourage you to have a numbered list of priorities and goals so that you know what you're doing and what's important to do, both on your agenda and the people's agenda here, so that you can be focused and effective. Next, for the financial director, I would like to know what's happened this last year publicly. I'd like a public presentation of the reserve drawdown that has happened under Mayor Cutrone's tenure. I'd like to know about the unbudgeted expenditures that have happened. I would like to know what the amount of unfunded mandates have been. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. I don't see anyone else in the room. Are there folks on Zoom?
Uh, yes, Mayor, there are several raised hands. The first one is Scott Mason. You're unmuted now.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Yeah, I was hoping to see Mayor Cutrone here tonight. Unfortunately, he wasn't here. My comments were more directed at him, but I guess, you know, I'll make them towards the whole board. Barbara, you live at 14 Ace Court. Hail Hitler, white power. Fuck the hail Hitler.
I didn't hear him.
He is, yeah. Is the same person that last time that was trying to put out people's addresses and then said a bunch of racist, anti-Semitic stuff.
Okay, so I just want to give you a warning. You have to be within our subject matter jurisdiction. You should not give people's addresses out and I will cut you off. Should we go to the next speaker? Okay, um, there is a process. Thank you, Michael. There is a process with warnings. Thank you. Uh, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Kristin Amlee. Kristin, you're unmuted now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So affordable housing is a top concern for many people. There was a recent presentation at the Marin County Commission on Aging Housing and Transportation Committee. It highlighted that accessory dwelling units or ADUs are not the affordable housing solution many people thought they were. At $400,000 to $600,000 to build, do you have available funds to build, let alone maintain these or offer them at reasonable rents? The next Commission on Aging General Meeting, which is open to the public, is at 1:30 PM on December 11th at the Marin Wildfire Protection Authority Boardroom at 1600 Los Gamos in San Rafael. There will be a presentation by the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, or BFA, to discuss affordable housing. BFA is a regional authority that represents all Bay Area counties. Their purpose is to raise, administer and allocate funding for homes affordable to lower income households. BFA will discuss a proposed regional bond that is under consideration for the November 2024 election ballot. If voters approve the bond measure between $10 billion and $20 billion would be raised for affordable homes throughout the Bay Area. Marin Access offers some new affordable transportation options for enrolled adults 65 and older and for people eligible for Marin Access Paratransit. Marin Access Catch a Ride Pilot Program offers $20, $20 vouchers for Uber or taxis every quarter. The Marin Access Star Ride or Trip Ride Volunteer Driver Programs offer mileage reimbursement for drivers of choice, including caretakers or family members. Go to the Marin Transit website for more information. My name is Kristin Amlee and I am the Fairfax representative on the Marin County Commission on Aging. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Renee Goddard. And Renee, you're unmuted now.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Renee Goddard, Cascade Drive. And this is a thank you to the council staff and the Fairfax community. It has been an extraordinary 2023. One of my children One of my children's most influential teachers, Mr. Tim, always kindly but firmly redirected students who tended to put one another down. He taught us all to catch ourselves, and when a put-down slipped out, he asked for a put-up to follow. Despite seeming elementary, it is an act of kindness, and it makes the world a better place. Just a few things I'm grateful for, and I offer you the following put-ups. Most recently, on November fourth, the Marin Open Space Trust completed a purchase agreement with the wall property owners for two-point-three-million dollars. You were tenacious and made this happen. On November first, you directed your Ross Valley Fire Department Board representatives to support funding for a third firefighter per engine. This board unanimously approved the funding. Thank you. Thank you for allocating one million dollars of the twenty-three-twenty-four budget to road paving and other capital road repair projects. You made unprecedented progress on the electrification of town buildings and the municipal fleet, record-breaking sidewalk improvements. You moved forward and responded to the community by making substantial amendments to critical anti-displacement tenant protections. You hired additional staff to continue quality and efficiency in town services to ensure a manageable workload for the dedicated staff who work tirelessly to manage this busy and thriving town. In an IGA Marin voice piece this week, Frank Strasburger, chaplain at Princeton University, delivered a message that spoke to me, and I would like to share. So, this is a plea that in nations at war and in the housing.
Thank you, Renee. Sorry, we got to move on.
Three seconds?
No.
Okay, well, I thank you for your service. Check out. It's amazing. Bye.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Philip S., and you're unmuted now, Philip.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, so I can now do this the correct way. Sorry about the earlier misunderstanding on my part. Madam Mayor, welcome. Ms. Helman has on a number of recent occasions turned to staff during agenda meetings and asked them to make sure that the minutes reflect and capture the ranker present in the chamber. I don't know why she wants this in the record, but I might suggest that any editorializing of the record make note of the disdain emanating from Ms. Helman and others on the dais towards the citizens in the meeting room. We hear you loud and clear. There's no doubt in anyone's mind about how you feel about the public voice and concerns that run contrary to your ideology. Ms. Helman and Mr. Cutrone both called me a liar at a recent agenda meeting. You won't hear it on the tape because it occurred during the break, but they both know it happened, as do others who were present. I bring this up to you because I hope your reign as mayor takes a different tack. I urge you to allow citizens three minutes to speak so that they feel heard. I also hope you resist name-calling and gabbling residents. It appears that the town purposely or inadvertently found the most obnoxious clock timer chime available. I don't know what was wrong with the previous clock, but the replacement feels like it's intended to offend the public, and there's no good reason for that. Thank you so much, and I wish you the absolute best this next year. You're going to need it. There's a lot of issues before the town, and people are very concerned about the direction we've headed. We're headed in the past three hundred and sixty-five days. So thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you, Philip. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Lynette, and Lyn, you're unmuted now.
Hi, I was wondering if you could change that bell to a harp sound? That would be much better to digest. Right on to Frank. I'd like to suggest that Jerry Kelly, who I do not know, he owns Sonus Menswear in downtown Fairfax, that he become the community ambassador, because I've never been to his shop. I don't know him, but what he does on next door to promote the town and the businesses is amazing, and I've lived here all my life. So I wish he would, he should get something. This is serious. I really want you guys to ban the resident, on residential homes and in residential areas, those bright recreation string restaurant lights. They take away completely the dark skies we have up here looking out into our valley. Completely. In fact, we have to close our drapes because they're right at eye level. Gone are the stars at night. I mean, they just keep them on the commercial, but not in a residence. It became a trend during COVID. Seriously want you guys to take care of that and do something, but I don't know how to confirm that you're protecting our, our dark skies. The other one is with the open space for wall property. Bravo. I don't know how it jumped up another million, but I'd like to see that all red-curbed up there, and I'd like the Miranda neighborhood to have resident parking only, unless you have a permit. That's it. And then the street cleaner needs to get us a schedule because we got caught off guard with the truck this week. We all went out there running around. Where are the homeowner protections for, where's the warm line for homeowners? I don't see it. That's annoying. Move Town Hall into Hen House and build housing for fire and police to have housing for extended day shifts. That's it. I hope you guys listen to the dark skies. Thank you.
Thank you, Lyn. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Liz Fromberger. Liz, you're unmuted now. Liz, I see you're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Do we want to go on to the next speaker and then go back to Liz?
Liz is the last speaker.
Okay, well, let's give her a moment. See if she can unmute herself.
Yeah, Liz, maybe you're not connected. Maybe your microphone's not connected to your computer.
Well.
Your headphone.
I apologize, Lyn, but well, maybe you can work out your technical issues, and we will move on. But a couple of things, did we have another speaker in the room? Did you already speak? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not keeping track.
Not a problem at all. Thank you. Actually, the other day I walked down Belinas Avenue, and I was looking at the condition of Belinas Avenue. And really what I was paying attention to were the numerous patches at different times really forlorn here and the subsidence that's generally around that area. And so I would like to bring to the town's attention that possibly our reengineering and recompaction might be deficient. Possibly, we're allowing too many trenchless opportunities for moving different utility lines, which if you make a hole this big and you put a pipe in it that's smaller, the area around it is called piping. And piping takes the water and it collects the fines, which are the very small little particles that make your water brown, and it takes it out, which creates an exfoliation like at the top of the cavity, and so you'll have this continuation of the subsidence. But if you look down Belinas, you can see really how obvious this is. So I walked down from approximately the police station down to, I guess, center. And on both sides of the road, you can see how it's dropping. You can see how the town is trying to grind the sidewalks to accommodate different shifts and stuff. But I think it's really time that we address the continuing cause of this problem before we have to re-engineer our street and bring it up to a correct elevation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is Liz back?
Yes, I will try her one more time, and then the thirty minutes will be up.
Okay.
Okay, Liz, you're unmuted now.
Seems like we have some technical difficulties. So let's move on. Just a couple of partial responses for prior Mayor Egger. So Fairfax and the Cascades are not the highest areas. If you look at the recent maps, the very high fires severity zones are, there's a few in Mill Valley and mostly all in West Marin. We have high fire severity zones in the Cascades. What, there's a couple of issues that may be helpful in the future. Part of the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority has been working with the insurance industry to try to get them to work with us on where people have cleared defensible space, et cetera. So hopefully, there will be more amenability towards writing policies where they have dropped policies. The other piece is, you may have followed, that Governor Newsom and the Insurance Commissioner recently made a deal with the insurance companies to allow them to use a new factor in the way they evaluate policies in the state that they've never been able to use in the past. The policies will go up, and I think it's either going to be effective in twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five, but they will start writing more policies because of this. And as you know, there is the Cal Fair Plan, which I realize is more expensive. But I have friends who have been in that situation in Oakland and other areas. It's, it's really, I, you know, the Cal Fair Plan, which is, will insure, but it's not as good, and it is more expensive. So that's a couple of answers. And I know that's not what you want to hear, but that's a couple of responses. And then the last thing, just for folks who came in late, who were on Zoom late, we continued item four, which is the renter protections implementation to a date in the future. We haven't decided that date at this point. One of our council members raised some issues regarding the vendor for the warm line, so we're going to be looking into more options. So stay tuned for that, but that, that will not be tonight for those who are here waiting for that. So with that, let's move on to the regular agenda. And I'm probably not as organized as I used to be when I was sitting on the sidelines. I have it. Thank you. So we're going to be talking about adopting a resolution authorizing the town manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with Marin Sanitary Service for street sweeping services for a period of three years in an amount not to exceed four hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. And I'm assuming our public works director, Lauren Umbertus, will be delivering the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Kohler, and congratulations on your promotion. We do have a small presentation. If I can, I'll try to share my screen. I can. Okay. Thank you for allowing me to come before you this evening. Tonight, our first topic is, in fact, Fairfax Street Sweeping Services and asking the council to consider allowing the town manager to enter an interim agreement with Marin Sanitary Services to provide street sweeping services for the town of Fairfax. In the audience tonight, we also have a Representative Justin Wilcox from Marin Sanitary Service as well. So if there are any questions for myself that I can't answer, he's available to help us out here. Go to the next page. Just to start off, one question that has continued to come to me is, what are other communities within Southern Marin doing for their own street sweeping services? So I reached out to the other groups as part of the Marin Public Works Association and asked them what they do for providing street sweeping services. And you can see here that almost all of them, except for San Rafael, contract out for this type of service. Belvedere currently owns a sweeper, and they operate that sweeper with their own staff. I believe that their town, their public works director told me they run that one day a week. But obviously, they have a very small staff. They have a very small community. But they did actually go out to try to get street sweeping services outside, and they did not get anyone to bid on that service. You can see that San Rafael operates their own sweeper program. The county of Marin actually has a couple of sweepers themselves, but they typically use Marin Sanitary Service for, for most of that. So this is one thing that we learned. I know that there was a comment as to whether or not we could share services with another local community for street sweeping services, and there just aren't very many communities out there right now that operate their own. That may change, and, and there are probably opportunities to discuss in the future for that.
So not sharing street sweeping services, but potentially in the future, looking towards purchasing a street sweeper with another jurisdiction or more so that we can get these costs. I know it's expensive even when you have your own, but that's something we will look towards in the future.
Correct, and there's a little bit more information about, you know, the cost of sweepers that I've done some research on. It's not comprehensive, but it kind of gives an idea of where the costs are and kind of where the technology is. We'll get to that in another page.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, of course. So the next slide talks about what current and proposed street sweeping services are today. I did not include, because I'm not entirely familiar with how the program worked before, but the town of Fairfax did have its own sweeper. It operated it using its own staff. There is a certain section within Fairfax that receives sweeping every Monday, every week. The rest of the town receives sweeping on kind of an ad hoc schedule as needed. That required staff to, you know, obviously operate the machinery, but if they needed to, you know, warn the residents that this was coming, place signage the day before, letting people know that they were going to come. Currently, we are on a kind of a month-to-month contract with Marin Sanitary Service to continue the street sweeping in the downtown area and along Sir Francis Drake and Belinas Road. That does take place every Monday, every week. That will continue under the new program. So we'll continue to see that type of service in that area. What we're proposing now to do is add a number of zones within town, and there's a map in here that shows where those zones are. And we originally, for the purpose of the proposal, to get a maximum cost requested two times per month, per, per zone. So first and third, you know, Thursday of every month would receive sweeping. We received some numbers. They're in the staff report. But we decided to go back and say, what would it be if we had two times, you know, per month for four months out of the year when it's most desperately needed in the winter, when all the leaves are coming down, and then change that service to one time a, a month over the other remaining eight months? And that's the numbers that we're utilizing today in our discussion. So.
And just to, it's not on the slide, but as you said, the downtown area would still be once a week.
That is correct. The, the zone that includes the downtown area and Belinas and Sir Francis Drake will continue as every Monday, every week.
Thank you.
So I don't know if you're fine with us asking as you go, but, so basically, what we're doing is adding to the existing service, right? If we go with this.
Correct. What we're, what we're doing is, is creating a new schedule. We're working with Marin Sanitary to identify zones. They will become regularly scheduled. You'll, if you live on a certain street, you'll know that on the first and third Thursday of every month, you'll see the sweeper or some schedule that we have that's in here. That's, we're, we're trying to create that as a, as a regularly scheduled service. Currently, what we're doing now with Marin Sanitary Service is that they're going out on their Monday, doing their regular Monday service, and then based upon calls that we receive or what we observe out in the road, we send that sweeper out to go and touch someplace, but we're only getting that one day out of the week. By implementing this service, we'll obviously be able to put a lot more effort into keeping streets regularly cleaned. We'll still have that opportunity on occasion to send them out to another location if we need it in some other spot. But the idea is to, you know, now create a system where people can anticipate when there's going to be a sweeper on their street.
While we're on the, the topic of like what the difference is between what's existing and what's proposed, had a quick question. Are you, how are they billing currently for the current service that's provided? Is that just like a month-to-month sort of contract, or is it an annual contract, or?
No, it is a month-to-month.
It is. Okay, so that's, that's the other big change, is that this is a multi-year contract. So, you know, we're able to forecast costs associated with the service too, right? That's a, that's difference. Yes.
Okay, the next slide has a lot of information on it, but we can make this available to everyone. I won't go through all the details, but it does kind of talk about what some of the pros and cons are.
Let's, just sorry to interrupt. Let's make sure in the future, let's try to make these slides a little more simple, because I know I can't read them, and I'm sure people in the audience can't read them or on Zoom.
Right.
But also, let's make sure we post them on the website with the agenda item. But, you know, I, I know there's a lot of information. But, you know, I I know there's a lot of information, but if we can split it up a little more, I think that'll be helpful. But thank you for doing this.
You're welcome. I appreciate that. I I understand there's a lot of information. A lot of it comes down to the flexibility of having your own sweeper versus the benefits that you gain from having it be a contracted service. For example, sweepers are very expensive. They're very technical pieces of equipment. I read one article from the EPA that suggested that the real usable lifespan of a sweeper is anywhere from four to eight years. Obviously, the one that we previously owned lasted for a long time, but the more time you use it, the more money you will spend on its repairs. The other types of issues on sweepers in particular is that if it goes down and we own it, then the service stops. We have no more service. Marin Sanitary Service has multiple sweepers. They can still provide service to our community. If it goes down, it's not the type of vehicle that we can bring over to Peruvas and have them work on it. It may have a very particular type of repair needed. So that's something to take into consideration when we own our own sweeper. And in fact, the Public Works Director of Belvedere said that they allocate within their annual budget fifty thousand dollars solely for the maintenance of their sweeper annually. And they, I think, only drive it, you know, once a week and they have very limited amount of of roads. So imagine that we're going to be doing significantly more sweeping, significantly more mileage. You can see that the cost and impact upon a vehicle would be increased. So that's just one note that I heard from the.
The other factor with our street sweeper, it was out of compliance with California Air Resources Board rules for many years.
Correct. And 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 I do know that the the intent of the council in the community is to start electrification of the fleet. I did find one article about the city of Los Angeles. They purchased a sweeper. They noted in the article that the sweeper costs about eight hundred thousand dollars. And I believe that the article only came out within the last couple of years. So the sweeper technology, the electric technology for sweepers exists, but it's not very common. So there's not a lot of historical data on how they're going to work and how effective they're going to be and what types of issues they're going to have. But, you know, that is the way it will move. The this contract does allow for the flexibility of canceling the contract or review of the contract over certain periods of time. When the technology and the costs start to come down, the the town will have the opportunity to review that and then make a decision as to whether or not to continue a contract with Marin Sanitary or go in a different direction such as a combined purchase with another community. You had a question?
Hi, yeah. So I think you've you've provided a lot of information as far as the cost benefit of, you know, whether we own the the equipment or not. My question is just the the value in the context of of expanding the program in the context of what we're anticipating anticipating to be another really heavy winter. And it's it's not just about cosmetic and keeping the streets clean. There's value in it with regard to keeping the gutters clean and from an anti, you know, flooding perspective. Is that right?
Absolutely. So the there there's a number of things that are achieved by having a sweeping program. Obviously, the the community looks clean. It also keeps the leaves from getting onto the gutters. That's the primary reason that we see localized flooding is that the storm drain inlets become overwhelmed with the leaves. There are so many leaves. And so that prevents the water from getting effectively into the storm drains and can create some other issues. We also have a lot of regulatory requirements. We are required to capture trash. We're required. We're required to do that by our stormwater permit. And one of the ways that we can show compliance and show that we're working towards that is by the reporting of saying this is what we're collecting from our streets. We have certain areas that are noted and we are required by our permit to make improvements on there to bring the amount of trash. And by trash, I mean anything that is greater than five millimeters that is not organic material. So cigarette butts or plastic cup lids or anything. That is where the street sweeper is helping us by collecting that material before it makes it into our storm drains, which go directly into our creeks.
And as far as the expansion plan for the streets, did you use some what we saw last year in particular, like out out here on this street, for example, was pretty bad park.
Right, there's there last year, and and again, I don't have a lot of the historical data on Fairfax. A lot of our issues were we have a storm drainage system that's very old. It is designed for, you know, certain type and sizes of storms. On Park Road, it was just overwhelming. The street sweeping program isn't necessarily going to affect that type of thing here on Park. We have other programs and plans for that, but it will certainly help in those areas that when you get a large deluge, you get that wa, you get that water into the storm drains because there's not as many leaves. For instance, last year, there was a significant amount of mud and debris that ended up on Manor Road as a result of an overflow at Rock Ridge. And that was because of the culverts either underneath the bridge and also on the ground, the drain inlets were overwhelmed with leaves and the water just simply had no place to go. So it went down Rock Ridge and on to Manor. This by having a program, we're mitigating that to some degree. We're taking those leaves and that debris that would otherwise sit on top of that storm drainage inlet and getting rid of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next slide here, and again, this is difficult to see, but, you know, these are the zones and we can, you know, provide larger size of these. And these were zones that had been developed, I think, many years ago when there was a street sweeping program before the town chose to purchase his own sweeper. We'll be working with Marin Sanitary on these zones and 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 figuring out the best way to implement the service because there are going to be certain areas that we're going to see may, you know, not need as much, and we're going to see some other areas that we're going to have to to work on. Initially, the idea on this program is we're going to set this up, start implementing it, use the newsletter and other ways to inform the public, hey, street sweeping is coming to your area. It's going to be on these days. We'll be placing temporary signage into those neighborhoods, saying, please expect it. And then we'll see how everything starts working out, work out the kinks. The good news is that Marin Sanitary is already familiar with our town, so that makes it a little easier to tell them this is where we're going to go. They're familiar with these locations already because we've probably asked them, hey, go run over here on this date and try to get it. So we will be having some some kinks to work out as we implement this program. Every public works director I've talked to in other areas where they're bringing in a new system has found that it's a very difficult process to implement, to make sure that they're getting quality service, to make sure that the residents know. We currently don't have any parking restrictions in these areas where we're going to say you cannot park here on this date or we will ticket you. We don't have that. That's not our plan right now. Our plan is to ask for the residents to to see that it's happening and to voluntarily move their cars. We can have discussions about that later, once we get this program as to whether or not we have to do something like that. But my hope is that with enough signage out there and potentially future permanent signage, alerting people to these dates, that people will voluntarily move their cars and assist us in that sweeping program. This next sheet is the proposed rate schedule for the seasonal service levels. That's the two times per month, four months out of the year and eight.
The schedule that you negotiated from the original schedule? I can't see it.
Yeah, that is correct.
So it's four hundred and fifty one thousand nine seventy one.
That's correct. I don't know if I'm going to be able to.
It's actually in the staff report.
It is in the staff report.
You can, it's on the, it's on the safe out there.
It it is in the staff report and it's on, I think, if I I was looking at the staff report online, it's on page thirty six is where that is located. But it breaks it out per, you know, zone about what these costs are. And Justin, we we can ask Justin if he wants to give a little clarification, but the estimated first year one fee would be a hundred and forty three thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. The rates will be adjusted annually with a base increase at least two point five percent or but not to exceed five percent in any given year. We can talk a little bit about how that gets adjusted if you have a question on that. The agreement, as it's currently written, does allow for three options to renew for three years each. So for a total of nine additional years beyond the first three. And but we also do have a clause within that agreement that says the town reserves the right to cancel the contract at any time with a thirty day notice to the contractor. So we still have that opportunity that if things do not work or we choose to go in a different direction, we still have the option to cancel that contract in that agreement. So that concludes the presentation. I'm open for questions and comments.
So do council members have questions? Council member Cutrano.
Yeah. A couple of quick questions. First, Public Works Director Umbertus, I just wanted to thank you for the thoroughness in the staff report and explaining the like out to bid process or trying to reach out and like, you know, really doing a good effort of trying to figure out why folks might not respond to bids, even, you know, not taking the first no or the lack of response as just the the answer on its face, but actually sort of following up on that. It's something we hear a lot from the community in those bidding processes. So thank you very much for doing that. Quick, two, a couple of quick questions. The first is our former street sweeper, which, as the mayor mentioned, was out of compliance. You know, I I recall when it was in operation and going around town. It almost made air quality worse in the in the summertime for just how much like particulate matter and, you know, stuff coming off the street that was just being kicked up. I was thinking about it on Park Road, just go like as it drove past, say, the playground and then the air quality just gets worse and worse as it drives by. I'm curious with the new technology and maybe it's a question for the folks from Marin Sanitary. Is the, are the new machines like far better at avoiding creating fugitive dust or creating additional particulate matter that that is kind of like a nuisance to to air quality?
So Justin Wilcox, thank you from MSS.
Yes.
Marin Sanitary.
And just before Justin starts, you mentioned something about the reach out to the bidding community, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone in the room knows. When we issued that request for proposals, that request for qualifications, I reached out directly and spoke with representatives from Bay Cities Refuge, and I spoke with representatives from Mill Valley Refuge Service and specifically asked them, you know, we have a RFQ out. I would like you to take a look at it. They both neglected, and and I should say that Bay Cities Refuge is the service for Sausalito and Mill Valley Refuge, you can see within where they're working. But I contacted them both after they did not submit a bid and asked them why. And both of them said that they couldn't take on any additional service, that it it just didn't work within their system. And so they chose not to bid. So I just wanted to make sure. And then I also submitted to the Marin County Builders Exchange and the Sonoma County Builders Exchange. And at the conclusion of the bid process, I did ask them to give us a sheet of who had looked at the bids. So we did do some outreach, but unfortunately, we only received the one from Marin Sanitary Service. So thank you for asking that question. And Justin, if you can talk a little bit about that technology.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for for considering us. And as far as our sweeper goes, we use a Timco six hundred. We do have three of them in our fleet for our current sweeping obligations. They are a, you know, newer newer design that helps remove exhaust, dusty exhaust. So they use a regenerative air system. And so the the brushes, contrary to what a lot of people think, the brushes are not sweeping the the road. They're dislodging debris. And that kicks it into a central vacuum that brings it into the truck. And then the air is recirculated inside the truck to avoid that dust emission. So will there be a little bit of 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 dust kick up? Yes, especially in the drier months, they do. We do have water on the truck and water is laid down, and that's the primary function of that water again is not to scrub the street, but to keep the dust suppression down as that material is dislodged into the vacuum system.
Thank you. And one follow up to that, just in the other areas in the Ross Valley or in Marin where you're currently providing services. Have you heard any complaints or have there been any concerns in neighborhoods where people are saying, you know, we actually don't want this because it's creating more issues with air quality or with dust being kicked up or anything like that? It's just on my mind, so I figured I'd ask.
Yeah, in the almost four years I've been here, I haven't heard complaints. Well, maybe one or two complaints about dust in that in that time. Again, that would be more if if, you know, for some reason, there was maybe a malfunction on the truck and the water wasn't spraying properly. I I really, most of our complaints are because people didn't realize it was coming and want us to come back. So not a lot of complaints about the service.
Got it. Okay. And one other question while I have you on the impacts in neighborhoods. As Lauren was alluding to, there are some, you know, areas where there are lots of cars parked on the sidewalks or on the roads. And I don't know how well these machines handle that in some of the neighborhood type settings, but I'm thinking about my neighborhood, like I don't even know where people's cars would go in the event that they needed to move that. It's either like, you know, park a little bit more on the sidewalk and get his, you know, hug the curb as much as possible, but just wanted to get your take on how you all mitigate those sorts of issues.
Yeah. So in in cases where there's vehicles, the truck just drives around, so they're not getting into the into the curb and and getting that material out of the curb. What we have found is a lot of residents become very engaged with the sweeping programs. And we'll have neighborhoods that kind of work together to remind each other of the the upcoming sweep so that if if there's somewhere to move the cars, they will move it, knowing that it's coming, as as Lauren talked about, we'll continue to work with you on on the schedule and dialing in the schedule so that it can be something that is message to the community so that community members can prepare so that the cars will be out of the way for when we sweep. Again, to answer your question, if a car is there, you're not going to get the benefit of the sweep in in the gutter. It'll still pick up anything that's in the roadway. But, yeah, it it it'll take good communication and some cooperation from the community.
And, you know, Justin and I haven't talked specifically on this, but one benefit of having Marin Sanitary Service being our refuse pickup service is that they're already within our community. And so in the process of rolling this program out, I think we have the opportunity to utilize some of your services to get some of these messages out to your customers. So once we start getting the schedule, you know, kind of drilled down, you know, there's opportunities that they can reach out to their customers who are our residents and let them know, hey, you know, we have a new program here. Here's the phone number for you to call. Here's the schedule for your street. It's going to take a little time for us to figure out all the details and, you know, to address things like that. There may be situations where, you know, in the future, we're looking at this side of the street gets swept on this date. And then you move your cars back and forth because we do have lots of streets where we can move that around. But those are the really complicated details about bringing in a third party and trying to manage a service throughout an entire town. It's a not a simple one, and I and I think Justin probably has a lot of experience with that.
Yeah. And if I can add to that, Lauren, I'm glad that you mentioned that. So we do, for our waste service, we have a an app that you can subscribe to a reminder every week to put your cans out. Most people don't really need that reminder because it's every week. But with street sweeping, it's a really, really great opportunity because it's once a month. People forget, so we can, we can, for anyone that subscribed to that, we can alert them the night before to move their cars.
So it's all integrated, like if people have questions about either trash or the street sweeping, or if they need the notifications, you're able to leverage the infrastructure you currently have, apps or website or hotline or whatever, and and people can all feed into one cert or one contact essentially?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, as was mentioned, we just started servicing Novato because we don't do the waste collection there. That's not going to be an option for them, but because our residents here already have that option of that that mobile app, we can make that available at no additional cost.
Great. I just have one final question, which is for Lauren. Great. I just have one final question, which is for Lauren. In the estimates for managing our own street sweeper, there was a figure or an estimate, it was like $250,000 for maintenance. And I was wondering, I know you're sharing earlier in the presentation, you know, maintenance might require some some special specialization or a particular firm, but where does that assumption come from, the 250K? And or how does that break down? Is that based on prior experience in town or?
Thank you for that question. I would refer you back to the staff report we had, I believe it was October fourth is what the town manager is telling me. And we went into a little detail about where we got some of those numbers. So if you refer back to that, I think that there were some, you know, we think that staffing costs this, we think this costs that. And we took into consideration what we thought were some, you know, numbers for the purchase of a vehicle. So I would refer you back to that. I can't remember, you know, off the top of my head, all the specifics on that. But essentially what we're taking, you know, what we tried to collect was, you know, the cost of a sweeper for a one time purchase, the ongoing maintenance of that sweeper over a course of years, the use of staff time. So in this program, we're going to be, you know, doing multiple days that requires a staff person solely to drive that truck and deal with that during that time of sweeping. But it also, you know, we had, we had to set up signage or notify residents, so that took up other staff time the day before. So again, I would refer you back to that staff report. I think there's some detail on that. But a lot of it is just taking what information we can get gather on cost of a vehicle and and anticipate a staff time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions on the dais? I just want to ask a couple of questions. I think, Justin, your idea of the app and perhaps maybe a flyer to the customers. But I think one of the questions I would ask staff is I noticed on Santa Anselmo's website, they had a whole thing on street sweeping and the map of when your days are. I'm hoping we're contemplating doing something like that. I realize it's going to take a little while to get it totally worked out. But I would also suggest a question to you. Have you considered that once we figure out more hard to firm what the schedule is, and I know that'll take a few months. How about a direct mail to our residents? You know, letting them know, telling them to park elsewhere. And one of the things I would, I think that would be helpful. I I think redundancy using the app, which a lot of people won't use. I know I don't use it. I can't imagine wanting to know when I have to put out my garbage cans because I do know. But I think it would be helpful to also consider as you do the schedule, the idea of, and I hope you're considering this, and I'm just asking the question of what you mentioned before, which is doing one side. Because Mayor, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Cutrano's neighborhood is not unique. We have neighborhoods, I'm sure your drivers tell you. They're just packed with cars because there's nowhere for people to park. So if we can consider as we set this schedule doing one sided on a day. I think that would be more workable for people. So just maybe those are more comments and questions, but I hope you're considering those options. And I just want to add one thing. When when I saw the staff report, I looked up a couple of cities that are doing street sweeping, not here at all. One was back in 2014, and the costs were about this. And also where they did comps on what it would cost to buy a sweeper and have a driver and all the maintenance. I mean, it would, I was, when I first saw the staff report, I was pretty blown away. I thought this is crazy. But then, as I started researching, and then I asked our Lauren, you know, what is everybody else doing? It became clear that this is an expensive proposition, and I'm hoping in the future that we can really consider. Maybe it's worth a partnership, maybe it's not. Maybe, I mean, what I also found four to seven years, the life of a sweeper, and I think some of that is probably maybe in the old days, the sweepers lasted longer because we didn't have these California Air Resources Board rules that are rapidly, maybe not so rapidly changing, but they're changing for cleaner vehicles. So you know, it may not be the right time, but that's the extent of my question. So with that, let's open up to public comment, and I want to remind folks, we have two minutes per item. And thank you for Sierra, I think you're first.
It's probably a great deal, but I'd really like to see cost comparisons for what we have now compared to what's proposed, as well as a breakdown for if we had our own sweeper and such. Another question I have is how clean? I ride a bicycle a lot, like about 3,000 miles a year, and the small rocks that are on the on the shoulders and the road sides. I've been told that most street sweepers don't pick those up. And those are really hell on a bike. In term, I mean, people wonder why bikes ride right on the white line. People hawk at bikes because they think they're in the roadway, but the thing is, if you're on a bike, the further away from the white line you are, the more rocks and other crap is in the roadway. So I wonder, it's like, how much are the street sweepers from Marin Sanitary going to take care of the small rocks? Or is that another machine needs to do that? And in terms of notification or figuring it out, it takes a while. It's like where we are Oak Manor, we get the street sweeper about once a month. And it's taken a while. Oh, shoot, it's the first Monday of the month. And I've often run out there practically naked and barefoot to move my truck, but if you live in a place where the street sweeping is not that often, you want to get it done because the leaves do build up and it's nice to get done. And I'd rather not see all kinds of more street signs and poles that say parking other side of the street only, or even no, you know, no parking on Tuesdays and Thursdays and days that you stand on one foot and hop backwards or whatever it is. And I was also told by whatever, forgetting your name. Anyway, I was told that the lines were down and that someone, Liz Frommberger, has been trying to call in for about an hour and can't get through. And I don't know if that's online or if it's on the phones.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Michael McIntosh. We've actually been having problems with Comcast, so I wouldn't be surprised. Our gate, as well as our computer access is our office for the last few days, gone up and down. But specifically to the proposal before you, the first thing that I do notice, and I'm a big supporter of Marin Sanitary Service, I think their staff is polite, their staff is accountable. I've actually enjoyed all my interactions with them for the creek and for my property. If you go over an area that has a lot of dirt, you will make a big dust storm. When I've had them like do my parking lot area, the police were called once because they thought there's a fire out there. It makes a lot of dust sometimes. But the most glaring thing that I saw up here is not about Marin Sanitary Service. It's about our rapid approval of a five percent annual increase. Yet you deny that to your housing providers. I think that speaks volumes. So somebody who you like, I think we all agree that Marin Sanitary Service is a very valuable vendor that helps us all. You're very prompt to give them a reasonable rate of a five percent, especially when you look at the ongoing cost operating business in California. But again, you're diminishing your housing providers that bring your community together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark Bell. I probably won't need my court mandated three minutes. Six years is almost a million dollars with this contract. Brings up several questions. One, you reached out to other places, but the state if they only get one bid, they keep putting it out to contracts. Why didn't you contact? Are there are there no companies in Richmond who might be interested or somebody else over in East Bay? There's no curb mile price quoted on anything. And I did a quick search and I'm looking at a regen, a new regenerative air sweeper costing between 215,000 to 315,000 dollars. I don't know where you're getting 800,000 dollars or 400,000 dollars. As far as maintenance, most communities are spending 50,000 maybe a year for three street sweepers, not for one. I don't know how old the machine is in Belvidere, but that's something that you should find out. Also, in this article that I found with a regenerative sweeper, you can do 35 to 40 miles a day. Price per mile can be as low in California as 12 to 16 dollars per curb mile. So if you're looking at a million dollars in six years, you're definitely saving money, especially if you have a staff person operating it like we had before. You have a machine that'll be available where it's needed if there's an emergency. I really don't know where you're getting these figures and to put up a slideshow of something that's not on the site so that people can look at it ahead of time. And then you're going to vote and approve it and go, well, after the fact, you can go look at this. I mean, I just find that incredibly irresponsible. I thought we were getting into like a new, I thought we were getting into like a new thing, you know, where we're going to be like responsible and get back to basics like the caliber.
Thank you, Mark. Please sit down. Mark, sit down now. Sit down now. It's a misdemeanor. Do not sit down when you're asked to. Yes, it is. Check our town code. Please sit down. Sit down.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
I can't hear you.
If I may, you you have the option to take a break if you'd like.
Okay, well, let's let's keep going. Thank you.
Hi, Todd Greenberg. Are we okay here?
Yeah, go ahead.
Great. I'll start again. Todd Greenberg, downtown Fairfax. I want to follow up on what sounds like a great theme that the new mayor has announced, which is back to basics. To me, and I think to a lot of people, back to basics means practicing fiscal responsibility. I want to second what Mr. Michael McIntosh said about being fair to all classes and thinking about what you are authorizing on the dais as representatives, as elected representatives of the people in the town. How can any of you ever vote one way against housing providers, yet authorize far higher raises for employees and outside consultants? It just doesn't make sense. Please make it make sense. You're being very unfair. Now, that's nothing against the potential provider of these services. I want to second one part of what Mark said about what, how come there isn't a study about what the cost would be if Mr. Cutrano thinks that there is a problem with the prior street sweeper? And if Mark has done research, how come staff can't do research to find out what the actual costs are and the different types? And why can't we get grants? If you're tied in with CARB, why can't we get grants for a new cost effective street sweeper? I would like you to practice fiscal responsibility when you're making decisions on the dais. Thank you.
Just Lauren, one of the things you neglected to mention is that we had gone for a grant and were not awarded the grant, correct? I think it was a $500,000 grant.
Yeah, actually, that may have happened before Lauren got here, but we did submit for a $500,000 grant for an electric sweeper. But unfortunately, we were not awarded that.
Okay, thank you. So are there commenters on Zoom? Did we get the technical difficulties worked out at all?
I believe only one caller was having a technical difficulty, and it seemed to be on her end, not our end. From what I can tell, it might have been a volume issue on her microphone.
Okay, thank you.
And we do have callers and you know, computer users in the meeting. So I think we're fine. Okay. Yes, we have a couple of raised hands. First is Lynn Yetter. And you're unmuted now, Lynn.
Hi. So when are your chants talk about the crowded streets? And what about the sweet sweeper and where are the cars going to go? Just put fire in the mix. I mean, that's what people that are concerned about fires and Fairfax are concerned about with the parking that's going on in the streets. If we can't even get a street sweeper down the street and we're worried about getting someone from side A to side B, which we've been able to manage all these years, but now it's just crazy down there with cars. What about fires? Oh, wait, hold on. Let's add more housing on top of that and make it even worse. So like the two have to think together, and I don't think that's happening here. The other one is, I recommended this years and years ago about adopted gutter, open drain. I've done it for years, walked around with rakes and shovels and put the debris up above so it clears the drain. It's actually a fun thing to do. I don't know why more kids don't want to do that. They like to play out in the rain. But people should take some responsibility and help their community and clear those drains and clear the leaves. There's nothing wrong with doing that. The other thing, page six on the report on section one, Marinda, is spelt wrong. It's M A R I N D A, not M I R A N D A. And I think all these little things, like not having enough room on the street. I don't know what happens if people just close their eyes to it. Like, let's think about it. Fires, streets, how the car is going to get along? Fire trucks, ambulances. I don't know. Let's add more housing and see how worse it can get.
Thank you, Lynn.
Yeah, thank you.
I want to mention that the staff report talked about 16.41 miles of streets would be swept. Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Philip S., and you're unmuted now.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I live on scenic and I can say that I have watched the sweeper from Marin Sanitary come by here at least three or four times. And it doesn't change. They sweep and the same amount of leaves are still there after they go by. So this idea that Marin Sanitary is doing exemplary job on sweeping the streets, at least in my neighborhood, is false. Second point I'd like to make is if you're going to make alternate side of the street parking on scenic where I live, you're not allowed to park on the other side. You have to park on the side where people park because a big sign, actually a very small sign says that. And no one wants to risk it a ticket. If you start to do alternate side parking for street sweeping, you're going to have to put up signs. You're going to have to go on every block and every 100 feet or whatever it is, put a pole in the ground with a sign on it. And if somebody doesn't move their car, guess what comes next? You have meter maids are going to go around and give tickets. So these are all the things that you guys are not thinking about that have to be dealt with. Let's not sign up almost million dollar contract for over six years without thinking it through to the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
There are no more speakers on Zoom, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So bringing it back, just a question, probably for Justin. There was one question about, does a street sweeper pick up small rocks in the, I'm sure it misses some, but could you explain that?
Yeah. So again, the 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 sweeper does have brushes. There's two brushes on both sides. So that as it goes into the gutter, those brushes are reaching into the gutter. If if those brushes are set too low, they're going to add to degradation of the street of the asphalt. So they really are designed to, you know, flick the debris that that is sitting on the top of of the street. And so, yeah, it may miss some small rocks. But, you know, they they are designed to pick up the majority of debris. You know, and 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 sweep that up into the vacuum system.
Okay, thank you. And I believe that Speaker lives in unincorporated county, which is some is done by the county and some county, which is some is done by the county and some is done by MSS. All right, thank you. So bringing it back to the dais. Uh, do we have further comments or, uh, emotion?
I just wanted to, um, check on one thing. So, um, some of the streets that, that we're at are going to get, uh, serviced once a month, except in heavy seasons, right? And then they're going to get, uh, additional um, street sweeping during the leafy season, for lack of a better term, which is like what, three months a year?
Right. The way that we structured the, the, um, sweeping program is that for the zones that we've identified that during four months out of the year, they will receive sweeping two times per month. And then once we're out of that, um, leafy season, we will then, uh, convert them to one day a month.
Okay, so then that means that, uh, people will really have to be on their toes about how often in those areas that don't get it once a week, uh, about when the street sweeper is going to come by. I, I, somebody said something about meter maids, but we already discussed that we're not ticketing people, right, for, for not moving their cars.
Right. That there, this, you know, it will be a challenge to implement the program and get, you know, everyone to comply. And there is a real challenge with parking in some neighborhoods. Uh, we're going to do, you know, whatever we can in order to get the information out that says the sweeper, sweeper will be at your house, you know, this date and this date and try to get that information out to them. Uh, we don't want to initially, you know, create this big change within the community and immediately start uh, ticketing. And in fact, I don't think we will, would be able to do that because we don't have a necessarily an ordinance in place to say you have to move your car or you will be ticketed. So, uh, initially, we're going to be working on this program as best we can. We're going to be doing outreach to the community, uh, as much as we can to say, hey, you know, voluntarily, do what you can to move your car, move it into your carport for the one day that we're going to be out there rather than on your street. Uh, and now as we move forward and continue with the program, you know, then we may start looking at, well, perhaps we can start putting up permanent signage and areas saying, you know, do not park on this date, uh, and, you know, first and third Thursday, that's what's in my neighborhood in San Francisco. Uh, and we'll start doing that. That doesn't necessarily mean we have to, you know, put up a sign and then immediately follow up with meter maids or with, uh, um, parking enforcement officers. But, you know, that's, that's for the future. For the councils decide what you want to do. So right now we're going to try to get the program in. We're trying to get the community used to it. Uh, and you know, some of the, one of the comments was, you know, adopt a gutter or adopt a, uh, that should still be happening. That's, this is not in lieu of that effort. Um, lots of our streets, you know, where the, the way that a tree is of the street, that brush isn't going to be able to always get into those, you know, spots. Uh, this isn't a program so that people can take all the leaves from their backyard and then dump it out on the street, hoping that the sweeper will pull it out. You know, that is, it's not allowed by our ordinance and we hope that people don't do that because the sweeper can only take so much and take that material up. This is, is, is an augmentation to what, you know, everyone should be doing within our community. Uh, so that, that's just one, one-
Just to add to that, um, if you look on Senate's almost website, along with them having the schedule, they also talk about your leaves are, are your responsibility. And I would suggest that we copy or do a better job than what they've got on their website when we get this program up and running. Go ahead.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was going to say. Um, I am, um, so I live on one of the streets that gets weekly service and I spent all Tuesday, um, when I wasn't doing town council stuff, um, sweeping leaves and it was something else. Um, and if you live on one of the streets with the big, uh, plane trees, they really drop barrel upon barrel every week. So I'm hoping that, you know, the service is enough for some people. And the question that I've always had is what is the responsibility of, uh, the property owner for the amount of leaves that go into the street? Like I swept them up, but, um, not everybody does, but a lot of my neighbors do. And so I do think that promoting, uh, this idea that, uh, as Ms. Yetter said, that we should, you know, people kind of adopt a curb or something, um, along with this would be great. Um, because I, I worry that the, uh, amount of leaves that come down will end up clogging the street sweeper or something that somebody's not going to get service as a result. I'm not sure where all that stuff goes, but it's kind of an amazing amount of stuff. Um, so I think that, um, that's all of my questions. I think one thing that would be helpful though, also is just, you know, I looked at those maps and there's no map of the existing service on those as, as far as I could tell. And so it was kind of, I was like, oh, are they taking that service away? Oh, no, they're not. They're just adding. So it'd be nice to have that also. So people don't get concerned that they're not going to get service anymore.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Are we ready? Oh.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for your work on this program. I think it's really good work and I'm, I'm happy to support it. And, and relevant to this work and all the other work you've been doing related to our pavement, the quality of our pavement, um, and thank you again for Portius and scenic in particular are phenomenal. I drive them almost every day. Well, scenic I do every day. We're hearing a lot from the community and obviously we, we were in the press about being ranked last, um, not something that anyone's happy about, but nor are we surprised. And so I would like to formally request that we agendize, um, a community survey, um, gauging, you know, the palatability or the interest level of the community for a bond that would, you know, fund the, the program.
Okay, so-
Attorney to talk about this. It is relevant. It's relevant. I got clearance from Janet to-
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so this, the kind of work that we would need to do like Larkspur did would require significant funding and we need the buy-in from the community on that. So, um, that is my request that we bring that back to the next council meeting, um, giving directions to staff for community survey. Thank you.
We'll decide when it comes back. Um, and it is somewhat unrelated to street sweeping, so-
It's related to the pavement quality.
Right, which is separate than street sweeping. So, uh, Councilmember Ackerman, did you have a comment? Or would you ready, ready to make a motion?
I, I have a bunch of comments over here.
And I'd like to hear from my colleagues on that item.
Uh, thank you for your research on this. Uh, I, I am glad that it's a program that could be canceled at any time. But we'll see how it works and I think it's a great place to start. Uh, do you have an idea of what time of the day the street sweeping, particularly in the neighborhoods other than downtown would be done? Because in most of our neighborhoods, certainly in my neighborhood, there are a lot fewer cars during working hours because a lot of people leave and go to work. So that would be the better time to, to sweep. Also not wake people up early in the morning.
And could you respond on the item that I raised on your, on whether you support the community survey, please?
Excuse me just a minute. Um, I would like to ask the town attorney. The road issue is separate from street sweeping. I suggest that that's a future agenda topic.
It, it is a future agenda topic. What I heard was she was requesting that it go, it be agendized for a future topic. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, but we, we can't deliberate it on, on discussion on that right now.
Right. It's just, it's just she made the request that it go on a future agenda. That's it. There's not-
And I'm soliciting support from my colleagues for that.
Okay, our town attorney said no more discussion on it. It's a request for a future agenda item.
Yeah. And that's all that's needed. That's fine. You're good.
Um, can you press your mic?
I, I had a question. I just haven't heard the answer yet.
Correct. So within the proposal, uh, that was issued to the, um, community, we did, uh, state that the working hours would be between six AM and five PM, Monday through Friday. Um, so we, we have that and we also have residential area and bike path working hours shall be between seven AM and five PM. So, you know, as we move this through and, and, and take a look at the program, uh, you know, using the expertise of Marin Sanitary Service and their driver, you know, where, um, we can adjust and how within a zone they can, um, best apply their sweeper, um, to, to, to kind of, um, work within the community. So, uh, garbage service and street sweeping services are oftentimes in the morning. They're trying to get in and out before all the traffic comes um, on the regular arterial routes and all the different roadways. So we have it right now broken out this way, but certainly we'll work with them. There's always situations that come up where, um, residents will ask if they can have it shifted around a little bit. Uh, we, we leave a lot of that up to the contractor to try to figure out how best to achieve the service with the minimum amount of impact. But of course there is an impact. We'll, we'll have to address that. That's going to be how we're going to work it. But those are where we bracketed at least their working hours.
I'm hearing kind of requests or, and I see a nod from Councilmember Cutrano that instead of six to whatever or seven, that we really look at more like on the order of around eight o'clock. We do hear complaints about people about the garbage trucks and I think the issue of people, you know, a lot of people work at home, but a lot of people still go to work in an alternate location. Let's really look at something more on the order of starting around eight o'clock so that we're not further impacting people's ability to get in and out during that time. Uh, Councilmember Cutrano, you had some-
Yes. Yeah, comments, comments. Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, and I wanted to concur with, uh, the sentiment you just raised that was broached by, uh, Councilmember Ackerman about, you know, daytime, if that's a possibility, that's, I mean, it makes a heck of a lot of sense. Um, a couple of things, um, that I just wanted to address. One question from the public about cost breakdown. Um, I know there, this is a question about comparables, but wanted to alert people to page sixteen of the staff report, which included sort of how each of the, the different segments, um, were responded to in the, um, request for, you know, the, the RFP, um, responses. Um, I thought that was just an interesting little cost breakdown, but that was one thing on costs. Uh, cost of sweeper, there was another comment that was sort of questioning the different estimates, but just wanted to make sure that folks were clear on the fact that we're talking about like seven hundred, eight hundred K was what y'all had found for the electric sweeper, which thanks for looking into it because of course it's going to come up. Um, and, uh, at the same time, the standard diesel was much cheaper. Um, and was similar to what one of the speakers raised in terms of cost estimates. So just wanted to note that, um, it seemed like, you know, those costs, uh, all sounded very sound to me. Um, one of the things on mileage, I was wondering, uh, Lauren, would you be able to share? So that the total that's being proposed is sixteen, almost sixteen and a half, sixteen point four one miles or something like that? What's the current mileage of the current route just for the once a week on Mondays downtown?
Right. Thank you for asking that question. In fact, Justin and I were having that discussion. Um, the area, uh, that is the downtown residential area includes, I think, a portion of Creek Road. I think it has um, some Dominga in there. It has some of those side streets. Um, we believe that, that that area that's currently under that weekly is about three miles, four miles. Um, obviously there's a little bit of, you know, there's some Sir Francis Drake and the Polinas on that, but we're, we're, we're looking at about between, I think, three and five miles is what the current area is. So we're tripling-
Got him. Okay. So, I mean, that gets to the heart of the questions around the, the, the soundness of this decision fiscally. Uh, for me at least, I mean, I look, you can go online, look at the map of Belvidere and their current route and they're doing their stuff themselves, fifty thousand dollars a year budgeted for maintenance. It's, it's a very small footprint. If you look at that map of Belvidere and what they're doing by themselves. Um, so to, to consider what we're doing for, uh, you know, over sixteen miles, um, that, that seems like, I, I did go back. By the way, I do have the old staff report where you broke out the number for labor and the number for repairs. It's actually in the August regular meeting for those who are interested. Um, and you had about a hundred thousand dollars for repairs and about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars related to labor. Um, but, you know, just on the repair side and the maintenance side of the vehicle, a hundred thousand, uh, you know, we're, we're definitely doing, uh, far more than what Belvidere is doing in terms of, uh, you know, proposing far more than what Belvidere is currently doing just based on their footprint. So I think like, you know, I'm using that hundred thousand dollars for maintenance as an estimate to just try to understand like per year, is this a good investment? Um, and, uh, it seems like it is to me. Uh, the other thing I wanted to share because there are questions about CPI and fi, you know, the five percent number, which is probably a high-end estimate of that particular index. We talked about this during the waste, um, hauling discussions and how we try to, uh, you know, capture the inflationary costs based on the index that's specific to that sector. Uh, that is how we are trying to talk about these things across various, whether it's housing, whether it's waste hauling, whether it's street sweeping, trying to capture inflationary costs specific to those sectors. Uh, we, I believe Mayor Kohler mentioned that at the last meeting, so I just wanted to reiterate that for folks who didn't catch it at the last meeting because it came up again, but it's very, it's sector specific. Uh, so, um, those were all my comments, uh, in response to some of the things that I heard in the community. But yeah, I think that, um, on the whole, looking at some of the numbers, uh, and what other folks are doing in the county, I think that this, uh, does make sense. Uh, and I, I would be happy to make a motion to that effect at the appropriate time.
Uh, let's go ahead. We've heard from everyone.
Okay, um, well, I, um, can I look at that really quick? My, my screen just went blank. Uh, yeah, so I'd just like to adopt a resolution authorizing the town manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with Marin Sanitary Service for street sweeping services for a period of three years in the amount not to exceed four hundred fifty one thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Would someone like to second?
I'll second it.
Uh, so that would be, uh, Councilmember Cutrano, second, Vice Mayor Blash. Could we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Cutrano?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash?
Yes.
And Mayor Kohler?
Yes.
Eyes all, motion passes.
Thank you very much. And I just want to emphasize this is part of back to basics. We're doing the basic good work that we need to do in town. So let's move on to, uh, item number three, adopt resolution authorizing town manager to negotiate and execute a professional services agreement with Fairchild Brahms Design for the Preparation and Construction Documents, Plans and Specifications for the Interior Remodel of Fire Station Twenty-One in an Amount Not to Exceed Forty Seven Thousand Dollars. And I believe, is this Lauren again?
Thank you, Mayor Kohler. Yes, it is. I will, uh, be giving a very, very short presentation and, uh, um, if you have any questions, the town manager is also here and we can give some background onto this. So I'm going to share my screen.
And Lauren, just, um, you're a little far away from the mic. If you could get a little closer. And let's hope that we have simpler slides for this one.
Very much, very much so. Uh, only four pages and one of them says questions. So it's only really three.
Excellent.
So as you know, the station twenty-one, uh, uh, next to Town Hall, that's a town-owned, uh, building. Um, but, um, Ross Valley utilizes it as their, their station twenty-one. See here, we'll go up to the first page. Um, the town committed in January twenty twenty-two to make upgrades to the facility in order to accommodate a third firefighter. It's my understanding that Ross Valley Fire, uh, may or is planning on closing the Ross Valley, uh, Fire, um, Station. And so they're going to have to move some staff around into various locations. And so-
So the town of Ross, not the Ross Valley Fire Station?
Correct.
Okay.
Station eighteen.
Thank you.
So this is to, so the intent here is to, um, uh, create, uh, plans and specifications for modifying the interior of Station Twenty-One in order to accommodate a third firefighter. Um, conceptual design, initial construction estimates have been completed based upon a schematic design that has been worked out with the designer and the fire department. Uh, right now estimated cost of total project is, um, showing at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, however, you know, once we finalize plans and specifications and put them out to the community, that'll be the real test of, of how much this costs. Uh, currently what's before you now is just an authorization for the town manager to exit acute, an agreement with the designer Fairchild Brooms, who, uh, worked in collaboration with Lentini Design, who did the schematic uh, to complete the, uh, plans and specifications for that interior remodel. Uh, on this picture, uh, this slide here are just some pictures of the building. The building is, is quite old, goes back to, I believe, to construction in the mid-sixties, if I don't, if I understand, um, my history. Um, currently the- Currently, the way that the sleeping quarters are set up on the upstairs is that there is a, a couple of beds and they're separated by basically a low pony wall. So they're sleeping in essentially the same room. There is no privacy. There is no doors within that current sleeping quarter. Uh, currently their kitchen is very small and is, is tiny. Um, it's all old cabinetry that's falling apart. There is a gas range in there that would be, uh, uh, changed out with an electric induction range. But there's a lot of, of, of issues with just wear and tear on that building. Currently there is a room that is noted as being the E O C, but it's just not really effectively used. It's basically empty most of the time. So the new design, uh, has some accommodation for that. So here are some pictures. It's just an older building. The new design here, uh, basically constructs two bedrooms that are separate from one another. There's an actual door there. It adds a second restroom to the upstairs. So now you have, uh, privacy, uh, in the event that perhaps a firefighter uh, or a staff person is female, uh, you now have the two restrooms. It does modify the kitchen. It creates a little dining area there. And then what it does is it takes that E O C room and makes that into a day room. So it's a little bit more effective, uh, for the use of three firefighters versus currently the two that would be occupying in this area.
For the public, could you explain what E O C is, please?
Sorry, Emergency Operations Center.
Thank you.
So it is, right now it's, it's a basically an empty room and I think that they can conduct training there. I think they told me that they have events there where people come and, you know, if they're having some kind of, uh, event, they use it. But now it will be converted into actual, much more usable, um, space. They can still use it for training. Uh, they can use it as a day room, make it a little bit more comfortable. And that's it for the presentation. So happy to answer any questions. The construction, uh, the idea behind these plans and specifications is to move that conceptual design forward. And then get us to a point where we can go out, get a permit and, uh, go out to the community for bids. And I will just note that, you know, among other things included in this is, uh, identification of where there's asbestos containing material within the drywall. So a portion of this work is also for remediation and removal of asbestos containing material that will be necessary as part of the construction.
So you don't always have to remove. I used to run the asbestos program out of the air district. Often you can just paint over.
Correct. If, if we don't need to disturb it, that's fine, but there is going to be some moving of duct work. Currently they have some
Yeah.
wrapped duct work, uh, any walls that have to come down. We already had an assessment conducted. We have that report. We found asbestos containing material in the drywall mud and things like that, which is pretty common. There maybe have to be some, uh, moving of vent lines for the exhaust for the kitchen. So they may have to go through the roof and sometimes there's you know, asbestos containing material and roof products as well.
And I don't know if they've looked at the floor tiles or also the ceiling tiles generally often have asbestos center from that age. Questions for council members?
Just what's the, what's the timeline again for coming back to us to actually move forward on the project?
So the current timeline for our design is upon approval of the agreement, uh, the, um, plans and specifications should take, you know, about three to four months for completion. And, you know, in that period of time, as we move closer towards getting that, we have options obviously to send it out for additional cost estimating. Uh, I don't recall off the top of my head whether cost estimating is included in this proposal, but we can certainly, uh, um, look into doing that as we move forward, but that may be more of an answer for the town manager. But the idea I believe is that, uh, there, the station is closing at a certain point, and so we need to be ready by that, that date.
So the design, the, the purpose of this is to create a design document that would allow someone to bid on it, basically something that's clear enough and that has enough specifications that, uh, bidders could estimate.
That's correct. It will be, uh, sufficient plans for submitting for a building permit and for submitting to the contracting community for, for bits. Yes.
Okay. And we have to remove the, uh, the fire station pole, right?
Under the design, the pole remains.
Really? Oh, I thought, oh, so cool. All right. Just joking here, if anybody's been in there, they have one of those old fashioned poles that you can slide down, um, which is add something to the historic flavor of our building. So thank you.
I have a question. Did you have a question? I'm just wondering, so two things. Why did the cost go from three twenty five to six fifty? That's double. And then the other piece is when I had asked earlier if we were going to go out for bid. I think I was told there was no plans to go out for bid because we're working with somebody who knows how to do fire station stuff. I would still recommend we go out for bid if we're not planning to. Cause, uh, otherwise we don't have any control on the cost, but go ahead. Uh, is ever going to answer the first question?
I'll jump in on the second question.
Okay.
So, you know, generally in, in projects that I've worked on, construction projects like this, the idea is to go out competitively, try to find designers that will, you know, design a project from the very beginning, you know, all the way through to, you know, that point where you have a permit drawing. Uh, I don't have a lot of knowledge on the history of how this started. But we, we went out, we hired this group Lentini Design, um, they produced that schematic design. The, um, the folks who are Fairchild Broom often collaborate with Lentini Design. And so the architect of record is actually going to be Fairchild Broom. Although some of the folks who were involved in Lentini Design will stay on. So we will maintain that continuity of the design of why we are doing the things that we're doing and take advantage of that information that we already have accumulated. So, um, in the future, uh, you know,
So for construction is what I'm asking, are we going out for bid?
We will certainly go out to bid.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. And then the first question is, why do we go up twice? I, I think the town manager appears to have taken off her mask. She wants to answer that question.
If I, if I may just add to what Lauren just said, um, so this design and architecture firm is working on a number of fire stations, both within our department system, so Ross Valley Fire and throughout the county. So they were recommended to us and we feel very confident in them being able to execute this design, um, and get it to the point of construction, um, bid documents. And then yes, we will put it out to bid, competitive bid. And that assures us that we're getting the best price on, um, construction. And that is something that is really, um, required by law as well as, um, being a best practice, whereas the design is more, um, you want to make sure that you have a designer who not only can give you a good price, but really understands the project. So those are those, uh, sort of that background. And then, um, in the J P A agreement or the amendment that was, uh, most recently done, the, um, that was, uh, the J P A was updated, um, to acknowledge that the Ross, the town of Ross Station was closing. And those firefighters, uh, were going to come to our, part of them were going to come to our station. We would get three firefighters on a, on an engine, which is, um, an upgraded service. And in return, we would have to upgrade the, um, station for that. That initial cost was two hundred and ten thousand dollars. We had that, uh, we were looking at that in our budget. Remember this is all happening while, um, first I'm new and then, and then Lawrence knew. So we're all getting up to speed here. And, uh, so as we were building this year's budget, which happened almost a year ago, we, um, acknowledged that that two hundred and ten thousand dollars, um, for a project of this size, especially what the firefighters really want, was pretty low and that it probably didn't include design services and construction management, things like that. So when we put that in the budget, we put it in at three twenty five. And then we were, um, attempting to hold to three twenty five. And as we, um, had those discussions between the firefighters and the designer, um, with our help, we realized that in addition to simply adding a, a, a set of beds that in order to really provide the privacy and the, um, livability that the firefighters truly desire, we needed to, uh, change the project a little bit more. And so that's the design that you see now is that the kitchen gets moved that necessitates a new kitchen. It'll be an electric kitchen. But it is a new kitchen that's costly. And then there are, um, new walls, new bathroom. And, um, moving those systems through the building is also very costly. So tho- those costs went up. That, uh, initial first pass estimate was over a million dollars and, um, I, I, I could not stomach that. And so we went back and value engineered it and got it into the six fifty range. So it's an attempt at a happy medium for, um, both the funders and the users of that building.
So it's possible when we get the design specs in and we go out for bid on construction that potentially hopefully we could come in less and hopefully not more.
Yes. I mean, the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar estimate, it was done by professional estimators. So it's not just our kind of, um, professional guess. It's much more detailed than that, including this is the cost per square foot for drywall. This is the cost for moving these things. Um, so I feel much more confident in that. And we know, we also want to get started because not only do we have a deadline as far as the J P A agreement, um, but construction costs continue to escalate. So the faster we get out there, I think we'll do better.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation and sorry for putting you through the wringer. So let's open it up to public comment, please. First speaker?
Hi, Rick Hamer, Downtown Fairfax.
Could you talk a little bit closer to the mic?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor. Good to have you back. Um, Rick Hamer, Downtown Fairfax. First thing, of course, I want to preface with, I think all of us want to have our firefighters as ready and as comfortable as possible. Second thing I'm wondering is with the substantive remodel of over fifty percent of any room, that does this trigger a complete upgrade according to the thresholds of a substantive remodel? In other words, even though we're just changing some walls, the fact that they're within a room which comprises over fifty percent of the total structure, if this was a home or a business, it would be a substantive remodel, which would then trigger all sorts of other things. I want to make sure that was considered by the, the people looking into this. That would certainly explain why it would be six hundred and fifty thousand versus three twenty five. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure Lauren's busy taking notes. Thank you.
Hello, Council, Michael McIntosh. Um, first thing for Lauren, and I was trying to think the year, I think in two thousand and ten, I gave to Chris Moore in a complete set of the original blueprints for that building. So you should be able to have access to those and they would have shown your structure bearing walls, your sheer walls. So that'll help you with, uh, your remodel. I think the council would be naive to think that a remodel of this scale will be done for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm just trying to be honest with you. The cost of construction will certainly far exceed that. And I am interested to sit back and see how the council will approach from your definitions of earlier electrification, how you will approach this project, because I do think there's some, um, undisclosed costs coming up if you follow all your own rules. So I think that might be made public to the general public. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next speaker, please.
Frank Edgar Cascades. I think we have about thirty firefighter paramedics and there was one female at one time. I don't know if we still have one female.
She retired.
She retired. So we have none. You know, it's interesting. We've got a majority of, of Fairfax Town Council members that are women. And we've had a female majority for what, ten years? And it took our members are members of the Ross Valley Fire Authority Board. And you haven't hired a female firefighter paramedic? Are, are, are women discriminated against? By, by, uh, by the board? I mean, I, I don't understand what's going on. No female firefighters.
I don't think that's an issue. And let's move on.
Let me get into the why I think there's an issue here. The downstairs was separate living quarters for the captain, the captain's designated living quarters. Those downstairs living quarters, I don't, I didn't see them in the plans and I don't know what we're going to do with the downstairs. But that would make a good, uh, good living situation for female firefighter paramedics. You know, if in fact, the, the, the board was into equity with hiring, uh, uh, firefighter paramedics and, and having female firefighter paramedics, uh, that would be the opportunity place to put them. The, um, uh, the, when the closing of the emergency oper- Emergency Operations Center, well, what will Fairfax do for an E O C? With the next flood or the next whatever we're up against. Well, I don't know. Where are we going to go? What, what are your plans for E O C here at Fairfax? And then, uh, lastly, if Fairfax borrows six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Sleepy Hollow, there's nothing in a, a staff report that talks about the, the, the monthly payments or the annual payments or, or the interest rate that's going to be paid. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there comments on Zoom?
I see no raised hands on Zoom, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Bringing it back. Well, first thing I want to mention is one of the things our staff did when they put the staff report together was trying to be transparent about what the future looks like. So when the item comes back, where we know what the true costs are, a little bit more, a little bit less, uh, and the issue of borrowing money from Sleepy Hollow, then that'll be mentioned in that staff report. So this isn't the time for that. The question I have too, and, uh, former mayor Edgar raised is you talked about the E O C, at least on the plans, I see the E O C is there, but it's changed. And is that our plan that we would still have the E O C there, but it would probably be built out a little bit more? Lauren, could you respond to that?
I can, I can do what I can on that. And I'm sure that the town manager, um, Ms. Abrams has some other comments. When, when it's called the E O C, it's really just a large room, um, currently. There's some chairs in there and there's a table in there. So, um, it is not, uh, currently built out in a manner that, um, would be inappropriate E O C, uh, with like extra phones and things that might be necessary in an E O C. Currently it's just a large room. We, you know, certainly could take advantage of other facilities that we have. Last year, when we were having some of our emergencies with the rain and the storms in there, um, we, we didn't, you know, need to go and, and relocate to an E O C room. The county has opportunities to use their services as well. But it, 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 it really isn't an E O C in the sense of ones that I've seen, which is this is where everyone relocates and everyone has their position and here's all their equipment.
You can discuss what's on the plans now because I've been in that room when it's been an E O C. And I realize it's not set up with a bunch of phones and stuff, but at least based on what I saw on the plans, there is still a room available for an E O C. Remember we, you weren't here, but we had a flood in two thousand and six.
Yep.
And that room was used. And I've been there in other circumstances when the room was used. So are the plants contemplating that that room would still be available for an E O C? It may not be built out with phones and special computers, but it will still be available for that purpose. Is that correct?
The way that it's currently being set up is, is, is as a day room with a, you know, with a larger ta- I mean, this is showing right now furniture, which we'll still have to finalize all those details, but the way that the room is being shown out now is it's being used as a day room. There is a conference table in there. Uh, it can be used when, um, the firefighters are there for any of their daytime purposes. But it could also be used for training as well. So, um, I think that the building could still be utilized for, uh, emergencies. We are very short, uh, uh, on space within the entire
So I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think the real critical question is understanding that that room many days would not be used as an E O C. But at least based on my view of those plans, it will still be available for that purpose.
I think that's right. I think that's right. It currently says E O C multipurpose room.
I think that's right. I think that's right. It currently says EOC multipurpose room. There's semantics, there's some new words there. It says people will dine in there and other things, but like, can, should we just put multipurpose room? Is that okay to put in?
I think we should call it EOC slash multipurpose.
Yeah, just leave it the same name.
Um, yeah, so just to clarify, um, the, one of the good things that you see there is that there's no um, sleeping furniture being moved into that building. There are um, long tables and chairs and um, so that facilitates, if we were to use it as a, an EOC, we could still go in there, we could still use it. That furniture's um, easily movable and it's not needed for other things. So I feel very confident in that. And then also I want to point out, um, as Lauren mentioned, um, things have really changed in the last couple of years in the county, in that the county has built out some of its emergency operations um, center in a new way, where they have actually allocated space for towns to be able to come there in the case of an emergency where um, decision makers and or um, staff would have to be out of a danger zone. So one of the issues that we have with that fire station is that it is the lowest point in our buildings. So it tends to get flooded first. So while we can use it, we may need to have a plan to be somewhere else and do that function, and we do have that plan.
Well, just, and I know I'm beating this to death, so I apologize. Um, so I've been an incident commander before for Cal A P A. We had buildings all over the state. We could go to Sacramento. But during the nineteen eighty nine Loma Prieta earthquake, our EOC was in Berkeley at our office. And so in some events, like an earthquake, our emergency personnel will not be able to get to that EOC. So let's just be clear, it's an EOC slash multipurpose room. Uh, let's not change anything where we're going to move beds in there, et cetera. So we will have the opportunity should we need it, and it's great that we have these other features. But um, so I apologize for being a dog with a bone on that one. So uh, thank you for that. And it looks like Councilmember Ackerman has a question.
I just wanted to follow up on the same thing, which is, which is uh, something I wanted to address before you, before you latched onto that bone. So it's okay. Uh, yeah, I think it makes sense that that room is uh, what I would suggest is not only to, as you've already said, not put beds or other furniture in there that would interfere, but also to, and you probably would be doing this anyway, but just to make sure as one of the specifications for the design that you have internet access in that room, maybe on a couple of walls, you have ethernet, so that a screen could be put up, the the, the firefighters might actually want a screen anyway, because they might want to use it for something of their own. But just wire it so that not with a bank of phones, but just so that we can set it up in there for either an EOC or there might be other reasons for meetings. We really don't have a large meeting room in in town at all. As you know, the uh, the, the lobby of of Town Hall is way too small to get very many people in. So it just seems like a useful room to plan for um, setting it up to where it could be a meeting room for whatever purpose. Thank you.
Good comments, uh, Councilmember Hellman. I love that. Let's go for it.
Yeah. Uh, and thank you, Lauren, for um, handling all the questions. And Heather, um, I'm really excited to make this motion and all the good work that's happening to support um, our firefighters in particular. Um, so I move to adopt the resolution authorizing the town manager to negotiate and execute a professional services agreement with Fairchild Brahms Design for the preparation of construction documents, plans and specifications for the interior remodel of Fire Station Twenty One in an amount not to exceed forty seven thousand dollars.
I'll second the motion.
Could we get a roll call vote, Madam Cooley?
Yes, Mayor, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
And Mayor Kohler.
Yes.
Eyes all.
And I want to thank uh, Councilmember Hellman, who is the president of the Ross Valley Fire Board, and Councilmember Cutrano, who is our representative as well on the Fire Board, for all your work to get us to this point. Uh, three on an engine, we're getting there, uh, July first, twenty twenty four. All right, so I would make a suggestion that we take a five minute break and uh, let's get back here by nine twenty two. Thank you. Okay, uh, so we are moving on to uh, I've lost my agenda. Okay, we're moving on to item five, which is received twenty twenty one. Fairfax Greenhouse Gas Inventory Report, Climate Action Coordinator, Sean Ura and Christina Rourke from Ems, uh, Marin County Environmental Partnership. And I see Sean right there with his smiling face. And I'm guessing we have Christine. Do we have Christine as well?
Uh, I believe, uh, but
Sheller. Christine Foster needs to promote her to a panelist.
Okay, uh, Christine Foster is working on that.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Council. Congrats, Mayor Kohler and Vice Mayor, uh, Blash. Um, this should be very short item. Um, and uh, just to kind of tee it up for Christine, there she is.
You are? Welcome, Christine. I apologize. This Marin Climate and Energy Partnership, Councilmember Ackerman corrected me. Thank you.
Correct.
Yes, Christine is with the MSEP for short, um, Sustainability Coordinator. She'll be giving the short presentation on this. Um, but this is a pretty standard thing that we do every year that Christine helps us with to develop these uh, annual greenhouse gas inventory reports for all the Marin jurisdictions. Um, we've been doing it for several years. Um, I believe last time I, or for last year, I included in my quarterly update report and you know, this time we wanted to make it a little bit more visible and make sure the community knows where we're at, uh, when it comes to that.
Sean, sorry to interrupt, but can you turn your sound up a little bit? You're a bit low. Maybe it's just me.
Uh, let's see if like, is that any better?
Yeah, that's quite a bit better. Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, so yeah, it's a standard thing that we do every year. Um, and it just helps the town monitor its progress and meet its local um, greenhouse gas reduction targets. Um, again, those are to try to reduce emissions to zero by twenty thirty, um, and also meet the statewide goals um, to reduce emissions forty percent below nineteen ninety levels by twenty thirty. Um, so with that, I'll let uh, Christine um, take it away for the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Sean, and good evening, Mayor Kohler and members of the council. Let me share my screen with you. And okay. So this evening, I am presenting your Community Wide Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventory Report. This is for emissions that were generated in the year twenty twenty one. That is the latest year that we have all the data that we need in order to produce these reports. We are hoping we'll get the twenty twenty two report out a little earlier next year. So we're working on this now. As a reminder, this inventory is what we call an activity-based inventory. So it's calculating emissions from activities that occur within the Fairfax border. It's um, that's in opposition to what we call a consumption-based inventory, which would include upstream emissions and lifecycle emissions. So in our activity-based inventory, we see that most of the emissions are being generated from the transportation sector. That's represents fifty seven percent of the community's emissions in twenty twenty one. And the next largest sector comes from the consumption of natural gas in the built environment, and that represents a third of all emissions. The other sectors are pretty small. So we have the built environment, electricity sector, and that's just four percent of emissions. The sector has been getting smaller over the years. Uh, the waste sector as well has been getting smaller, and that's at four percent. The off-road sector, which is the um, transportation, is landscape and construction vehicles and equipment. That represents two percent of emissions. And then the smallest sector is, comes from the treatment and and delivery of water and wastewater to the community that's less than one percent. This is a look at emissions over the years. And so emissions in twenty twenty one were thirteen percent below the nineteen ninety level. Now, we, we've been in the past, have been um, reporting out as the, with the baseline being the two thousand and five level. But because the state is really geared towards um, uh, looking at emissions compared to a nineteen ninety level, we're, we're shifting to that. So we're thirteen percent below the nineteen ninety level. So some of the sector highlights, first of all, the uh, electricity, purchased electricity is down twenty one percent. That's due to pro- uh, PV installation, also energy efficiency and conservation. Electricity emissions are down even more at eighty three percent, and that's due to lower carbon intensity of electricity. Both PG&E and MCE has been steadily increasing the amount of renewable energy in their portfolios. And also sources like nuclear and large hydro generate no emissions as well. So emissions um, in this sector are really low and there's not a lot more to squeeze out of the electricity sector. Natural gas emissions are down ten percent. That is due, well, first of all, there's just a lot of variability in natural gas consumption and it's very highly dependent on weather conditions. So as the weather warms and the climate warms, we'll see, we should see natural gas consumption going down anyway. Part of this is also probably due to energy efficiency and conservation, as well as some fuel switching. In the transportation sector, VMT is up five percent since two thousand and five. Emissions, emissions, however, are down eleven percent, and that's due to better fuel efficiency and also more zero emission vehicles on the road. In twenty twenty one, almost six percent of the light duty fleet in Marin County were zero emission vehicles and Fairfax was a little bit lower than that at five point two percent. And then finally, in the waste sector, the waste disposal that goes into landfills is actually down twenty three percent. Waste emissions are down even more. They're down forty seven percent, and that's just due to the lower amount of organic content that is in our waste um, waste stream and that's being deposited into the landfill. So um, the best opportunity to significantly reduce emissions further is, comes from electrifying everything. So electrifying vehicles, including bicycles, hot water heaters, heating systems and appliances. Also, you know, continuing to get organic waste out of the waste stream and to shift our transportation to use more bicycles in general and um, and walking. So we can reduce vehicle miles traveled as well as the transportation emissions. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So any questions from Council, oh, Councilmember Cutrano?
Thank you, yes. Um, Sean, Christine, thank you so much for the presentation as always. And um, one of the things that it, I just want to share is these charts are always so great to see. It's just a great snapshot in time and it's so digestible. I think one of the most phenomenal things to see in the charts, especially is figure four, which is showing, I mean, there's a overall decrease in kilowatt hour usage, but it's relatively stable. But the dramatic reduction in emissions associated with electricity generation, electricity usage is is such a good chart and it's just such a good way to to demonstrate that like Marin Clean Energy, uh, you know, going deep green, like all, these sorts of things are so easy to do and they make such a big difference as far as like built environment emissions. Um, one of the the boogeymen kind of is like, you know, elephants in the room or transportation-related emissions. And I was curious, um, I know that the the five point two percent zero emission vehicles in Fairfax is like, that was a twenty twenty one snapshot. In the last year, um, we've been getting new data, both here at the council with the EV strategy, but also at the Transportation Authority of Marin of uh, zero emission vehicle adoption, as far as like new vehicles and new vehicle registration. And it seemed to be that that was between thirty and forty percent of new vehicles in Marin earlier this year were zero emission vehicles. And I'm curious if you know if that trend has continued this year? And how do you see that that trend showing up in this sort of greenhouse gas inventory moving forward? Are we, do you, do you expect to, expect us to see a, a real significant decline in emissions associated with transportation in the coming years as that ticks up?
Um, yeah, I do actually. So the third quarter of this year, uh, in Marin County, thirty eight percent of all vehi- light duty vehicles that were sold in Marin are, and are now registered to Marin um, uh, vehicle owners, were zero emission vehicles, and ninety five percent of those are battery um, electric vehicles. So even, you know, the hybrid vehicles are really falling out of favor at this point, uh, which is great news. And if that continues, I mean, this is like forty three percent above the rate that it was at last year. And if we continue to increase this by forty three percent, we're going to have a lot of electric vehicles on the road. My, kind of my back of the envelope um, calculating is that we'll be over fifty percent of um, light duty vehicles on the road in Marin County will be zero emission vehicles. So that will show up eventually in our, um, in the emissions. The way we calculate the, those emissions, we, we use a emission factors that are generated by the California Air Resources Board, and they update the, that model and those emissions factors every three years. So they have to, they'll go back and recalculate it, you know, as, taking into account the number of uh, emissions, zero emission vehicles that are on the road in Marin County. So we will see those emissions. I believe we will be seeing those emissions dropping over time.
Do you think they'll drop pretty significantly like before twenty thirty, or do you think it's going to be a post twenty thirty, we'll see a, a bigger shift?
No, I, I think we'll be seeing it before twenty thirty. Uh, the emissions, I think the last of fa- factors were done in twenty twenty one, so we should be getting new, you know, it's every three years, those emission factors are revised. And so I think we will be seeing those emissions going down.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, Councilmember Hellman.
Sorry.
Were you finished?
What? Yeah, um, hi, thank you. Um, I have just a couple of questions related to the data too. Um, the two uh, significant decreases uh, it, related to waste. Are we, is that pretty much on par with our other jurisdictions in the county, or was Fairfax uh, ahead of the game? I'm just curious about that. And then my other question is, how does um, so twenty twenty one, obviously being a year of the pandemic, how does that factor in? I, I'm a little surprised about transportation, because it kind of felt like we were sheltering in place, but, and no one was commuting, but I, I'm just curious to get your input inside, related to that too.
Yeah. So first, for the waste, the waste disposal numbers are countywide numbers, and we just take, we allocate that to the jurisdictions based on population. So the reduction in waste disposal is going to be the same for all of the jurisdictions. And that's because those waste numbers are reported by the JPA. I'll recycle on a countywide basis. So we just don't have the data to do it um, by jurisdiction. And then as far as the transportation emissions go in the pandemic, you're absolutely right. We did see big decrease in um, VMT from that many modeling, many models that are done and just surveys that were done. But the model that we use, which was just updated by MTC, they um, they didn't account for the, the pandemic. So they updated the model, but the years that they updated, they go back and they updated for twenty fifteen. And then they are projecting into the future and they give us data points for twenty twenty five and twenty, twenty twenty five, twenty thirty, twenty, it's in five-year increments after that. So the years in between twenty fifteen and twenty twenty five, we just interpolate the da- data and we assume kind of a smooth line of change between twenty fifteen and of change between twenty fifteen and twenty twenty-five. So you don't see the changes for the um from those pandemic years, even though we know that they're there. And I think I think the MTC is doing that because they're more um they're more interested in, you know, long-term changes in transportation than short-term changes based on issues, things like pandemic.
Okay, you might think about if it, I I might have missed it, but you might think about footnoting some of that because it wasn't clear to me um that that some of this, like you just explained, isn't actually uh actual da- data. I mean, it's it's and and the and the county data too, if it's a fact, I thought this was Fairfax data, so you you might just think about footnoting that for clarity.
So I guess um the idea is to say that you've extrapolated from county data because specific jurisdiction data is not available, correct? For the waste.
For the waste, yes.
Okay.
And um I I'd have to, I have to take a look at the, I do believe it says for waste, at least that it's based on countywide data. Um, but we'll go back and as you say, I think we should make that very clear.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilmember Ackerman, did you have a question? Okay, uh, and uh, Count Vice Mayor Blash, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, um, so just because I think people might ask, the fact that many Fairfax citizens in the town have solar panels. Um, that's only in this calculation to the extent that we participate in uh MCE and other uh energy programs because that electricity goes back into the grid. So it's not really, there's no accounting for that about how many people use solar in Fairfax.
I know it is, it's actually is reflected because it's purchased electricity is that, so anything that's generated and you're using that um is not going to, you know, that that's not going to show up. So it's whatever's generated is reducing your energy.
Right. And I think one of the things, um, I thought it was a great report. And just for the public reading it, I think we always want to go back to sort of saying why we're trying to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And I didn't see a lot of um talk about why it is we're doing this, um, which is all about global warming. So I just want to keep putting that out there that we're um trying to do this specifically because we are reaching a real crisis point in terms of global warming. Um, and that's why we are also as a town striving to do many of the uh various um initiatives that we have embarked upon around electrification, uh, single-use footwear ordinance to keep things out of the landfill. I was very interested in the statistics on um the reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from waste that goes into the landfill and the uh rejection of organics in that is it's a really positive and promising sign. Um, so I just want to keep putting out there to people that the reason we're doing this is because we're trying to impact climate change, um, which is, you know, driving some of the uh unpleasant things that many of us are very concerned about, which includes increase in wildfire. So there you go.
Thank you. Uh, so with that, I'd like to open public comment on this item. If there's anybody who would like to comment on this item.
Mark Bell Dominga. Several points, um, I'd like to know what you're doing to get these true-up charges reduced. Because people who put in solar systems now get like one cent where they used to get a twenty-six cent return, which de-incentivizes putting up solar on your house. Uh, secondly, you know, we have a neighbor just over there, twenty-five years in the EPA, still a consultant and tied in with the top people. She said electric cars are going to be, she doesn't have an electric car, she's waiting for fusion. She says that the battery, the the disposal, et cetera, that's going to be coming is going to be a huge environmental disaster, let alone what's going on in the Democratic Republic of the Congo, where two hundred thousand workers mine cobalt. Uh, I don't see anything uh in the figures about, you know, work trucks that come into Fairfax or weekend traffic that drives through Fairfax. So when you're talking about what the actual air quality measurements are in Fairfax, you know, a lot of this is external and is not being generated by the people who live here. And then, of course, the other thing is that uh, you know, it's a pretty complicated world as far as energy generation. I don't know if they're still using credits, et cetera, and swaps. But there's an increase in burning of coal to produce electricity. And they're stopping the decommissioning of nuclear energy plants as well.
Thank you.
So I think these are some issues that need to be included in your report.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi there. Uh, want to bring up something that Sierra brought up before that conservation is probably a better course of action than blind adoption of EVs. I think there's some corrections that need to be made to some of the data that's been presented here. I'm going to read you some headlines from recent news sources. On ten twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, CNBC reported Ford posted about twelve billion dollars in EV investment losses. On ten twenty-seven of this year, that's October twenty-seventh, Ford lost an estimated thirty-six thousand dollars on each of thirty-six thousand EVs it delivered. Reuters reported Ford warning on EV results withdraws forecasts. There's also other reports out there that people nationwide are buying hybrids, contrary to what you just stated. EVs are not selling like they did before. They cost too much. The supplements are too great. Please do not create a false narrative. I don't know if any of you own an EV. I don't. Apparently, one of the council members here does. I have filled one out before, filled one up before. You don't get the mileage that's advertised. It's false mileage. The data that you're presenting is not accurate. Also, some of the rest of the report here, I don't know, per capita emissions. Fairfax with its housing policy wants to increase the population here by eleven hundred, according to the housing element, eleven hundred plus. Well, if you use fifteen percent population increase, how do you get a declining amount of emissions? You don't.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council, Rick Hamer, downtown Fairfax. Um. The, all the uh data and all the collection and all the efforts we're making um seem to be um kind of a a one-dimensional. Uh, one of the things about the uh US Green Building Council lead standards is that you can get all your points through one facet. In other words, if you are especially efficient in in um one of their categories, you can be a platinum lead member. There are other standards internationally which include uh which necessitate that you must include other standards self uh self-sufficient in a unit such as a piece of property or town. And these include things like beauty, is you must have beauty points. And I would like the the sustainability folks here working for us to remember this is not one-dimensional, that we need to consider transportation, of course, what the full cost of something is. Uh, there's a service called EC3, which will do this in a database. I'm sure that uh you folks have heard of it. But um, but to make sure that we don't forget beauty. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, are there speakers on Zoom?
Yes, Mayor. Oops. Uh, the first speaker is Tuna Fish Salin. You're unmuted.
Hi, guys. You've heard me say this lots and lots of times. We cannot consume our way to healthy environments. Nobody talks about conservation. Nobody seems willing to turn down their thermostat or turn down their air conditioning or put on a sweater. We're heating, overly heating everything and overcooling everything. Um. You know, Mark Bell had a lot to say, Rick did. Beauty is important. You know, as far as I can tell, we're trading problems without fixing them. I mean, with electricity, for example, it's like the heating need is in winter when there's not a whole lot of sun. Do we really want to extend nuclear power or coal? We're in a bubble here. Electrifying everything and banning natural gas is perhaps a tad oversimplist, oversimplisticistic given, well, humans. We still need production. Where's the production of the electricity? It's been disincentivized. I don't think we have the energy to supply all of our electric. It's like, what happens to like just driving less, consuming less? What are we leaving of nature to begin with? We're still over-consuming it to landfills that are basically lifeless. We don't need, all need a Tesla and a bunch of batteries. Where's the storage? Um. Extending nuclear is the worst idea. It's like I've said that a few times. I mean, really, nobody is practicing or talking about or living or few people are really expressing conservation. We're still driving in circles and chasing our tails. It's a matter of education and lifestyle choices really matter. Um. Conserve, conserve, conserve. We cannot consume nature. You know?
Thank you, Sarah. Um, next speaker.
I see no further speakers on Zoom.
Okay, bringing it back. We don't need a motion. This is just received. The twenty twenty-one Fairfax GHC inventory report. Any last comments?
No, thank, other than thank you for being here so late.
Uh, yeah, thank you both. And um I know Christine is working from the best available information and doing the emissions inventory based on the best available information and appreciate Sean working with Christine on this matter and doing so much for our town. And just uh wanted to let folks know that I sit on the board of MCE and have done so for about ten years. There are a lot of new members on that board and we have a policy to not buy nuclear power. And there are folks on that board who would very much like to reverse that policy. So if it does come up, I'm hoping that people speak up. Uh, and if I get word ahead, I will bring it up, but that's just a side note. Thank you very much, folks.
Make one comment.
Okay, quickly.
So just uh just one general comment and thank you for this inventory. It's always helpful to see and I look forward to in some future years seeing the inventory for our uh town uh governmental uses as well. But I just wanted to point out in 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 general that, of course, a lot of what we're trying to do here by electrifying things, by reducing consumption, that is addressing greenhouse gas inventory, greenhouse gas, which is uh addressing our crisis. But there's another thing to look at as well, which is it's creating an opportunity. So we, there's actually infinitely abundant solar energy available. There's actually a kilowatt of solar falling on every square meter, roughly a square yard of ground during the sunny part of the day, every day, a thousand watts on every square yard. It's a phenomenal amount of energy that we have. And it's free and doesn't have to be mined. We don't have to fight for it. We don't have to destroy societies. We don't have to ship it across the country or across the world. It's, that's what we're looking for is to get to the point to transform our society to a society in which we have abundant free energy and in which by investing in the capital equipment to utilize that energy, we have a better world and a more just world, a world which a lot more people can live to their potential. So it's, it's not just about addressing a crisis. Of course, it's a big transition. It's a huge transition. We're still figuring it out. But I really would hope that we in Fairfax can embrace the the challenge and try to move toward this vision rather than um rather than looking for every reason to stay with the status quo. So thank you.
Thank you. I just want to add one thing. I think Mark Bell brought up the question of the true-up charges. Uh, that was a CPUC decision. We do not have the ability to change that decision to um change the way people are paid. And so you can follow CPUC, but they made that decision several months ago. Thank you. Uh, so let's move on to the consent calendar. Um. But we are getting close to ten o'clock, so I would just ask. Uh, it's my view that we can finish this up. And do we need a motion to?
I'll, I'll move to suspend the ten o'clock rule.
Okay. Uh, so the motion Ackerman, second, Kachana, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kachano?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash?
Yes.
Mayor Kohler?
Yes.
All eyes motion.
Okay, so consent calendar, the council may approve the entire consent calendar with one action, one vote. In the alternative, items on the consent calendar may be removed by any town council or staff member for separate discussion and vote. Public comment for items on the consent calendar happens once rather than after each individual item. During the public comment period on consent items, speakers may comment on any items from this section of the agenda one time only. Each speaker may have up to two minutes and may speak only once. So did any members of the council want to pull anything off the?
Yes, I'd like to pull number seven, please.
Number seven, okay. Uh. Do we need a motion for that?
You can wait till.
Okay, did anybody else want to pull something off? Okay.
I wanted to acknowledge there were a bunch of supplements. That's all. There were three supplements.
Right. Thank you very much. Those supplements on seven, eight and ten. Um, so if we could have a motion to pull item seven. Do you want to make that?
I move to pull seven from consent.
Okay, uh, would somebody like to second that motion?
Do we, just a quick clarification, do we need a motion or can any one council member can pull it? We just have to figure out how we take it later. Yeah? Sorry.
I asked. I was told we did.
Um, I didn't mean right this minute. I thought you would go out to the public and come back and then maybe make your motions at that time.
I'm apologize for my.
Thank you.
My first night as mayor can't handle it, apparently. Okay, let's go out to the public, please, for the consent calendar.
I see Councilmember Kachano is yet again not filled in his monthly calendar of meetings. How many months is this now? And uh, Mayor Kohler, I'd like you thank you for continuing your violation of the public's right to comment under the Brown Act. Two minutes for, it's only five items or seven items, is it tonight? Instead of the fifteen, so you're actually giving people like twenty seconds to comment? I mean, really? It's just unbelievable.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker.
Todd Greenberg requesting that you pull item number nine. Consent calendar, item number nine, receive report from Pacific Gas and Electric regarding outage and reliability information, which is important for emergencies, which is affecting the viability of downtown businesses. Businesses are taking losses both in equipment and food and revenue. This deserves more than twenty seconds. I'd like to speak to this afterwards. I request that you pull that. Other comments while I have time here, I I have uh, I I'm going to slip this in and I'd like to be able to speak about the other things, but um. the data here that is presented is a marketing piece. There is one set of graphs here, pie charts, and doesn't have any tabular data. They, I would like to see, as I've requested before, the past 10 years of tabular data. We were without power for four days in downtown Fairfax last year. What are you going to do about it? Has anyone here communicated with PG&E about this? Do you even know what the real data is? Are you just going to blindly accept this? Please, let's do better than this. Other consent calendar item issues, I'm probably going to run out of time here, but I'll try. I mentioned before, item number six, reserved drawdown, unbudgeted expenditures. The public deserves to know that rather than just accepting these reports. We're not doing well as a town financially. And I want to speak to everybody else listening to this. The town of Sebastopol just declared a financial emergency. This town is upside down financially. There are $22 million worth of long-term liabilities.
Thank you. Are the speakers on Zoom?
I see no raised hands, Mayor.
Okay, bringing it back. Did anyone make a motion? Uh, first of all, I want to just mention one thing is item number nine. The mayor met with PG&E with the town manager. This was not an offhand thing. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just wanted to, there are a couple of comments, honestly, but like the, the first thing is per the conversation about outages and outages last year, we, I was, thank you very much, Town Manager Abrams, for making sure that this was on the consent calendar. I think it's something, it was a like sort of first of its kind thing as we were told by the representative from PG&E that they were actually doing this for municipality and that we were allowed to create a scope of work that they, that they then directed staff to do. I think it's something we should continue to do, especially to get more, um, in the nitty gritty of things. But I think it's a starting point and it's something that we can, it's a data point we can use moving forward to see if their planned outages are actually creating improvements downstream uh, as we get these reports moving forward. But yeah, I think they're good, good comments and good questions about, you know, duration and other things like that, that can be teased out in future reports. But I really wanted, um, Madam Mayor to just allow Town Manager Abrams, perhaps a moment to like wax on the financials and the budget of the town. Cause I feel like, uh, too many times in, in the course of this meeting, but also probably the last meeting, have there been claims of financial irresponsibility or like, you know, financial fiscal unhealthiness as far as the town's monies, which is not true. So I would love if the town manager could actually share a little bit more on that, if that's okay.
Be happy to do so. Um, so the, um, town of Fairfax is in a very strong financial position. And, um, you can see that by our, um, reserves. And so, for example, if you recall, last year, we were looking at reserves in the neighborhood of 45%. Unheard of. Our, um, our target is much lower than that. Our target is, uh,
It's 25%.
It's 25%. So.
Which is still actually much higher than most other cities, which tend to be 20 or even 15%. And places like Sebastopol, which just declared a fiscal emergency are way below. I don't think they have reserves, but go.
That is absolutely correct. And we know that there are, um, even communities that have either no reserve policy, which is, uh, you know, leaves you bare in that sense. Um, and some, um, agencies that feel comfortable with 10% reserve. So 25% is, um, considered very, um, safe and conservative. And in fact, the, um, GFOA, which is the, um, Government Finance Officers Association, recommends about a 23% reserve. So we're very safe there. And we talked, um, in the council retreats and in the budget hearings about what was safe and whether the council wanted to use some of that excess above the target reserve to do some of the projects that the community has been asking for. And so we made a plan to pull down some of those reserves still above target, but to keep a, a very safe reserve and also accomplish some of the projects, including the road projects that we've, um, already finished in order to serve the public who contributed that money.
One quick thing, if, just to reiterate for the folks in the back. Um, so we have a 25% reserve is our sort of standard right now, which is higher than most other municipalities, probably. Last year, we actually had over 40% in reserves, but you're saying, so we pulled down, we decided this year at the budget workshop and then it came forward in June and then in July with the budget. We pulled down some of those monies to address projects that the community's been asking for. And those are specifically, you, you said road projects. So you're saying public infrastructure, pavement projects and sidewalk projects are what we were pulling monies down for, um, which was codified in our budget and our CIP currently, just to clarify.
That's absolutely correct. And so, um, I think we've heard before in council meetings that, um, in previous years, the, um, um, the town was spending in the neighborhood of $200,000 to $300,000 on paving projects. And then it increased to $500,000. And then this year, the budget was a million dollars. And you see that specifically in the scenic portius. Those projects, um, together are about $750,000 and then other projects that you've seen around town. So we're seeing that progress happening.
And I believe my recollection was, we didn't pull it all the way down to 25%. I think it was something like 26 and a half percent. So we're still even healthier.
Yep.
And, uh, thanks for that explanation.
You also mentioned our auditor report.
Um, can you start? A little closer to the mic.
I didn't hear you. I mean, I also believe our auditor report says that we're in good shape.
The highest rating possible. Yes. So, um, we have a, a clean audit. Um, and they have come and present, presented to the council each year. And we will do that again as soon as the audit is finished. We're actually in the audit process right now. That's an annual process and included in the annual process, they're not only looking into our books and, um, coming onsite and looking at, um, our, all of our records, you know, they, um, do that, but they also reach out to, um, the elected officials and to myself to ask questions. So there's a very thorough process there. And that is something that, um, is, you know, required for, for every city. And then, um, addressing the, um, comment on the 26%. Yes, remember, um, the previous year we were shooting for 30% and then feeling comfortable with having, um, gone through that process. Then the council felt, um, okay with going to 26%. My guess is that when we look at the actual revenue received, we'll continue to do a little bit better in terms of reserves than we projected because we are very conservative about projecting revenues, again, in order to be safe financially.
Thank you. That's a great explanation. Um, I see two lights on. Who's first? Councilmember Hellman? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Ackerman?
I'll just throw out a, a, uh, thanks to, uh, Tom Childers, whom we're reappointing to the, uh, to a position on the tree committee. Tom is, uh, quiet, but very professional and it's been great having his help over the years.
And we appreciate him stepping up again. Uh, Councilmember Hellman, did you have your light on? Okay, uh, did, do we need a motion to pull item seven or anything else?
Yes.
Okay, would you make that motion?
I moved to pull item seven from consent.
Somebody want a second? Can we get a second?
Do we need a second?
Yes, we do need a second and then we need a majority voting yes.
Well, I don't.
You know, if you just have an edit.
Okay, here's my, here's my.
I don't think we need to pull it actually, if it's just a quick edit.
It's not a quick edit.
Okay. Well, I'll just second it, just move it along.
I would appreciate that.
So let's get a roll call vote.
Okay. Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash? Uh, okay. Mayor Kohler?
Yes. Okay, let's, before we take on that item, because it gets moved to the end, we are going to, I would entertain a motion for the rest.
I'm happy to move the rest of the consent calendar except for item seven, which has been pulled.
And just mention, uh, friendly amendment, uh, supplements for eight and 10.
Yes, with, with the supplements, yeah.
Yes.
And I'll second with that.
Okay, could we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash? Yes. Mayor Kohler?
Yes.
Motion passes with the supplements. Thank you.
Um, Councilmember Hellman, could you?
Yeah, hi. So, um, similar to, like akin to the conversation we just had, correcting mistruths that we continually hear, whether it's in the, you know, public comment or, uh, a narrative that's out on social media. But primarily what's captured or what we hear in public comment, we take strides to really clarify if there are mistruths, like we just did. We just spent five to 10 minutes talking about the fiscal health, right? In response to a public comment. I have done that many, many times over the past several months and asked that the minutes capture for the record factual information so that the public, so the record will show, the minutes will show actual facts. And the, this has been disregarded despite my request and I feel, um, frustrated by that. And I'm not going to approve the minutes as is and I'm not going to spend time watching, you know, 15 hours of video to provide the comments, but I would like, when I request that it's captured for the record, for the, for the sake of the public, for the truth, to be captured. I would like it to be captured.
Well, just a couple of things. So the minutes are intended, are not intended to repeat every word that's said.
That's not what I'm asking.
I understand that, but let me go on is that when I see things in the minutes, for example, last time we interviewed Teddy Cutrano, is that his name? I'm sorry.
No, no.
Caprini. I'm, I'm changing. He now becomes your son. Maybe not, your brother.
Teddy's great.
Is that, um, wh- what was missing was the vote and the fact that we made him effective November 1 because of his birthday issue. And so I have probably a good memory, but I think in what I do is I send those comments early and say, could you please capture that? And I'm just asking you, I don't know that our, a person who writes our minutes is always going to know that fine tuning.
Well, I've been saying I want to capture for the minutes. I've been very clear.
Okay, but if, all I'm saying is this, can you please, when you see the minutes, if it hasn't captured something that is specific to what you feel are, is error and you pointed it out, can you provide that to staff? Because our minute taker will not always know what, I mean, our minute writer will not always know that. I think Christine wants to speak to this. I saw you standing up straight. Or Michelle, I mean, I, I just, I think that I realize you're frustrated. I get frustrated when I read the minutes and I see things that I think are missing, but can you provide the specifics? You don't have to provide the specific words, but just say that this was corrected. And can you provide that to staff beforehand? So we don't have to go through every page. Is that possible?
I think what I'll do is in the future, send an email the day after the ma- meeting and highlight what I requested to be captured in the minutes because it's important to capture, to inform the community. Because we are seeing a trend of mistruths. It is an increasing trend and it's not going to go away as we, you know, move forward.
Well, I think, I think that's a good way to do it.
That's what I'll do, even though I, just to reiterate, I have been saying, please, for the person who writes the minutes, would you please capture this? And it's been disregarded. So I know that there's frustration in my voice. It's because I am frustrated.
I understand that. So let's try this and see if that works. And so since we pulled this item, uh, we have to open it to public comment. Uh, for item seven, which is on the minute, are there any commenters in the room?
Certainly. Now, many members of the Fairfax public would think that Ms. Hellman is asking to tell her own gaslit narrative through the meeting minutes, that she is going to direct how the public record and the public comments are portrayed. That is, to the best of my understanding, and I think many others, not how meeting minutes are meant to be conducted. There are actually, to the extent of my knowledge, four different types of meeting minutes, which I won't go into, but you can research. I'm.
I think we're familiar. Thank you.
Well, not everybody is. Apparently Ms. Hellman is not.
Let's, let's not do disparaging comments about our council member. You may not agree with, with Councilmember Hellman, but let's kind of keep it above.
Okay, so, so I, I, I think if, uh, there is direction that goes on here, there should be a disclosure to the public of the types of meeting minutes that there are and what the meeting minutes consist of. And they're not to be sculpted. They are a record of the public proceedings. And you can choose, if you so choose, to do more detailed meeting minutes than are being presented. That would be an option that would be permissible under the law. But sculpting the meeting minutes to how you want them to reflect is not. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, uh, we'll, we'll deal with that after. Um, next speaker, please.
Hi, um, Mayor, Council. This sounds like a matter that may need to be reviewed by the town attorney as to whether or not there's some type of disclaimer, disclosure or something at the bottom of the minutes or whether something's appropriate. That this has been, uh, to use the previous speaker's word sculpted or whatever word is appropriate. And, um, but, but I, I just scrolled through the item seven. I didn't see anything that really jumped out, anything than minutes. If there's any question, just watch the video. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any members on Zoom?
Yes, Mayor, there are. And the first speaker is, uh, Dee Lee and you're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, councilmembers, uh, for hearing me. I would like to suggest that if, um, the secretary, so to speak, the person who is, is compiling the minutes is being advised by one of the councilmembers outside of the public meeting, that the, uh, email that's sent by a councilmember asking for specific additions or changes to be made to the minutes be included within the body of the minutes for, uh, the sake of including the public and disclosure. So I have to say about that. Again, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. I just want to clarify what Councilmember Hellman is speaking about when she has spoken up in the meeting, in the public meeting and pointed out that something has been stated inaccurately or needs to be clarified. So what she's asking for is something that she said in. for is something that she said in an open meeting. It's not changing the minutes after the fact. It's not clarifying something in the minutes that.
It's not changing public comment.
Yeah.
I'm not sculpting anybody else's. I'm not.
Right. It's just where you have specifically stated in the meeting. So let's just be clear on that. It's not changing. We don't need a disclosure. It would just be something that she specifically said. Okay, who else do we have?
PJ Pfeffer is the next speaker, and you're unmuted now.
Hey, thank you. You know, wasn't really thinking about this issue, but I appreciate Councilmember Hellman bringing it up. You know, I, you know, I agree with some of the commenters that there are certain different types of meeting minutes that different bodies have, and an explanation of, of what is recorded, I think is always helpful. And, you know, it's my understanding of the idea that Councilmember Hellman is getting at is from, you know, at least my time in TV, is when you're, you know, doing a recording live to tape, you can mark things, you know, if somebody utters a swear word on air, the person in the edit before the, what was recorded goes live, like the meeting minutes, you do a correction. Or you flag, hey, we want to make sure that this is inserted at this time code. You know, it's obviously a lot easier to do live, but appreciate if Councilmember Hellman is sending it afterwards. If that's the best option, that's fine. I think to what some of the other commenters have said about, you know, characterizing comments one way or another, you know, I, one solution that people may not like, but so long as we have a good set of recorded minutes is going to more descriptive, or, you know, more action-specific meeting minutes. So instead of so-and-so says it's illegal for the council to do X, you just say so-and-so made a comment, and then there's not a back and forth in the meeting minutes about so-and-so said it's illegal to talk for X amount of time. And council member says, no, it's not. I think all of that's a bit too much to get into in the meeting minutes, but I think it is a concern that if somebody's just scrolling through quickly, and they see all these comments asserting that it is legal, or it's not illegal to do X, and there's no rebuttal in the minutes, people can get a misunderstanding. Thanks.
Thank you, PJ. Other commenters?
I see no more hints.
All right. So let's bring it back. And thank you for your willingness to.
Yeah, thank you for the discussion. Appreciate it.
And can I, oh, I see a finger.
Sorry, little, yeah, just wagging over here. Great discussion. I think it's worth having. And obviously, it was brought up during public open time, some questions about how, how minutes get managed. I, I guess it sounded like there was a solution to what we're doing, but I do think it would be good, like, if we did have a, an understanding, I don't know if it's from the clerks in the future, or how we do do minutes, or how we could do minutes, might be good to know directly from the clerks how they manage that process. Because personally, I, I also do not like having to, you know, go back to videos to direct people to timestamped parts of videos where said, this person said something about fiscal mismanagement, and then we have to like find the timestamp part of a video to say, okay, here, I watched this 10-hour video, and here's the part that says, you know, no, they're wrong. And like, get a bunch of staff opinions on it. It would be good to know, like, if we can do that, or how we do do that as a community, where we have our staff able to comment, or like, in, in the record, staff clarifying things, if there are questions coming from the public. But I know our clerks have a particular way of doing things. So I just wanted to hear from the clerks before we made a final decision on it, if that's okay. So I don't want to belabor the point, but just looking to the experts.
Um, Michelle, if you want to cover this, I was just going to make a suggestion that we just have a brief write-up on the different types of minutes and what type we do. I mean, I sit on boards that do action minutes, which you can't tell anything that happened from that, except for a vote, but you have no idea what else discussion was. Do you want to speak to that, or?
I can just give you some information.
Okay, that would be great.
That the town of Fairfax, many years ago, the town council at that time voted to have summary minutes, which is between, it's a little more detailed than action minutes, but these are not verbatim minutes. They're not a transcript. There, as, there's no sculpting. There is just summarizing of the comments. And we follow the City Clerks Association of California Best Practices. There's a publication on this. Action minutes are considered the best practice, because minutes are really a legislative record. It's a record of how you voted. And it's true, there's not a lot of color and detail in that. But for those of us on staff who need to go back and research things, what we need to know is what the council's action was. We don't need to know necessarily a lot of the other details that we include in our minutes. I see heads nodding. I also understand, I hear from Councilmember Hellman, and I hear Councilmember Cutrano saying this too, that it's useful to go back and use the minutes like notes to jog your memory, or get some information you were trying to remember better, or in the case that is before us right now, to clarify misinformation that appeared in the minutes from a member of the public.
But the minutes are not just for you. They're for the public, right? So they should, right?
Yeah, they are public records.
Right.
They are public record of your actions.
Public, if I couldn't attend a meeting, and I wanted to know, yes, what the action items were, but there is a summary of the public comments. And so if there is a comment from a council member to inform the public on a misstatement, a mistruth, a lie, right? I would like that to be captured.
Okay. Well, I think we've reached kind of a solution for right now. And thank you, Michelle. That was very helpful. I personally enjoy the summary minutes versus action minutes, which frankly, I can't tell what the heck happened in action minutes other than votes. So thank you very much for that. And I need a motion on item seven, which actually had a supplement. Could somebody make that motion? I would love that. Councilmember Cutrano.
I'm happy to, to move the minutes with the supplement.
Thank you. Would, could we do a roll call vote? Oh, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, second Ackerman. Okay, a roll call vote.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
No.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yeah.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes.
For one, motion passes with one no from Councilmember Hellman. Thank you.
Okay. And council reports and comments, we actually have a full report in the consent calendar that we just approved. Town manager's report.
Well, we're getting done early, so I.
If there's something important, bring it up.
Yes. Well, I mentioned previously, we are very proud to see that the major public works projects are complete. So you'll be seeing notice of completion in January for the scenic and Portus projects, as well as the repair at 145 Canyon, so on the road there. Very exciting to have that done. As you know, planning is working very diligently on the housing element, and we are looking forward to the special meeting for the council next Wednesday on that. So want to flag that for everyone. And there is also a planning commission the next day, Thursday. So lots of activity going on there. And wanted to, again, mention the Recreation and Park Department. Craft Fair is December 19th, excuse me, December 9th this week. Menorah Lighting on the 14th. And then, of course, the, the Chamber Winter Market on the 15th. So very exciting events happening there. Wanted to give congratulations to Sergeant William McCabe, who is becoming a lieutenant. I said McCabe.
Excellent.
I meant Cade. William Cade. Thank you. And that, that's effective December 16th. And congratulations to the council on having a successful reorganization. And we will have another reception next week for Michelle Gardner. We're very excited to congratulate her as well.
Thank you. And I know the chamber party is tomorrow, but we're not in charge, and they were sending out corrections. I think it starts at 5:00 at Deer Park Villa, but I'm confused. And I will also say with the Menorah Lighting, I think we all were invited. Unfortunately, I have a Marin LaFco meeting, and I am the chair. So I'm hoping many of you can participate. That's December 14th. And with that, I want to adjourn.
No, can we talk about future agenda topics, please?
Yeah.
It's not on the agenda, but okay.
We added it at the beginning of the meeting, right?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Well, what we can say is, we'll have a future agenda item to talk about a polling for a bond for roads, which was brought up by Councilmember Hellman. Is there anything else?
Well, I'm, I'm just curious about the, the homeless local sub, ad hoc subcommittee, which I asked for, I think, back in August. So that's been pending for several months.
Okay.
And I frankly didn't know about the fire. I don't know why I didn't know about the fire. I don't know if that's another mistruth, or, okay. And then the bike safety helmet is another one that's kind of pending out there. And it would just, it would be nice to just know when these are going to start to get queued up. Obviously, the housing element and other back-to-basics, I'm on board. But it just feels like we get agreement, and then they're, you know, kind of out there without.
Not sure that we have all agreement. We've talked about these items. I think the bike issue, we have the Bike and Ped Committee that's going to be convened soon, and that might be a really good item for them to take up as part of that whole process. Is that correct?
Yes. So we have indication that we are getting an award for Grant to update the bike ped plan. And so that would be a natural part of that process. And that would start, I believe, believe in the spring.
Okay. So, thank you.
We did have support for the homeless. I understood that, I mean, we, we talked about it, and we.
I'm not sure that I supported, but let's, okay, we have a new group.
Yep.
We, we need to keep our eye on the ball, which is getting the housing element completed. And so let's look at next week.
Okay.
And then we will start looking further as we get past next week in early January. Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And with that, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Rob Schwartz, very sweet man who had, you know, a dream of something he wanted to do for our town. And I have a feeling it may continue, but very sweet man left us way too soon. Thank you all. And, oh my God, it's just about 10:30. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.